As I call the order, this meeting will be adjourned to a school board.
Mrs. Treap tree?
Here.
Mrs. Erickson?
Here.
Mr. D.B.I.
Here.
Mr. Hamlin?
Here.
Mr. Matheson?
Here.
Mr. Paulson?
Here.
Mr. Veron?
Here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the liberty for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, first item on the agenda is a communication of also Dr. Turner.
Good evening and welcome to the Board of Education, Dr. Schuler, Ms. Cabot, and community members and other staff who are here this evening. And I'd like to welcome you to our lunch school and thank the community opportunity to help us in education. I'd like to begin this evening by briefly talking about...
Thanks, Erica. Briefly discussing how we are supporting Vision 2018 with Eastbrook Elementary School. And one piece of Vision 2018 is support systems, making sure that our support systems for students enhance their learning experience through corporate opportunities. At Eastbrook this year, as part of our Safety of the Schools Rule and our School Improvement Plan, we have a new vision statement. And we read these to actually our kids who read this every morning. And it's right here. It's in, posted all at Eastbrook Elementary School in every room. It says that Eastbrook, all Tigers learning, all safe, respected every day. I recently met with about fifteen fifth graders to sort of get student voice. Their input in terms of how are we doing that was the mission statement. And they gave us growing reviews, but a lot of suggestions to improve it also. But this evening, to take a little different stance on that, one of the ways we're supporting our Tigers learning and doing and saving the perspective is giving them opportunities through a corporate program. So I'd like to introduce one of our fifth grade teachers, Dr. Susan Sullivan. And she's going to speak about her program that's in its third year of existence through Eastbrook Elementary School, and that's our son is going to get. So, Dr. Sullivan?
Thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to speak about my passion. I want to talk to you about Science Olympiad here at Eastbrook. Science Olympiad, first of all, is a national nonprofit organization founded in 1984. It is one of the premier science competitions in the nation for primarily middle to high school students. It provides rigorous standards-based challenges to more than 7,800 teams in all fifty states. Their mission is to increase K-12 student and teacher participation in science, technology, engineering, and math. Three years ago, Illinois opened up Science Olympiad to elementary school competitions, grades three to five. And we were one of thirteen pilot schools. So as Dr. Turner said, this is our third year participating. In the first year, we had thirty kids participating. Only fifteen, however, were allowed to go to the competition. In our second year, we had thirty-six participants, but we were allowed two teams. And all kids got to participate in the competition. And in our third year, we had forty-eight students. And we will again have two teams in the competition. So our goals are to follow your passion for science. Science Olympiad is for those kids who are totally science nerds getting into or math. We develop teamwork skills. We celebrate our achievements and just happen with science. So as I said, it's third, fourth, and fifth grade students coached by sixteen parents and staff. And I'd like to just mention that we have M.D.s, we have engineers, we have an actual bridge engineer helping us with our bridge building event. There are twelve NGSS-aligned events. And we practice four events on a three-week rotation. So each child is trained in three events in various spaces and classrooms around Eastbrook. We started this year in early October. Generally, we try to start around then and the competitions in May. This year, they, we thought they would make it easier for us in February, so we're just bringing it. So the competitions, these are just some photos that I have. We have aerodynamics. Basically, they have to make a paper airplane that hits a target at some random distance that they don't know. They have, just to make it on the spot. Backyard biologists, they learn the various birds and insects in backyards. Jump cars, they're given materials to build a car that goes down a ramp and has to go as far. You have to know about a free-moving axle and a chassis and which, based on random materials, which will go the best. Rock hounds, rocks and minerals. There's anatomy, there's prime busters that used to be just mystery powders. And being able to identify using the chemical properties of the three powders mixed together. This year, they added fingerprinting, chromatography, a variety of other aspects to that event. Structure building, used to be just bridges, now it's bridges or towers. And another event called Write It, Do It, being able to write well and describe well. Metric mastery, mystery architecture. You might have to build something that floats, you might have to build something that is a catapult. You don't know. So you've got to train for all of these things. Science password, knowing science words. The Starry Night, that this year is astronomy universe. So our successes, we've been, last year, we won ten ribbons out of twelve events. So they did really well and had a lot of fun. And it's always amazing every day when forty-eight kids come rushing in to, not every day, every Tuesday, to have fun with science. Thank you.
So children, mission statement. Our motto, Eastbrook, is to be a tighter and very privileged to serve as principal and stewardess and also in our working community. There are people who are so dedicated to volunteering the time, the student volunteers are trying to offer their science Olympiad. Certainly along with a lot of our parents who have a lot of professional obligations and that they devote the company for, for the betterment of our kids. So our kids can pop off, collaborate, and critically, and apply that through science, technology, engineering, and math, and also through development. Welcome to Eastbrook Elementary School and enjoy the year.
Thank you, Dr. Turner. Are there any modifications to the agenda that the board members can make? There are none. We'll go to recognition and achievements, Dr. Schuler.
Thank you, Mr. Rowan. We have one recognition this evening that we're very pleased to bring to the board and the community. And I'm going to introduce Asa Gordon from the college board, who's going to join us at the podium. And Asa's going to tell the board and the community a little bit about our recognition this evening, so please have a look.
Thank you. To the school board, Assistant Superintendent Schuler, my name is Asa Gordon, Director of K-12 Services for the College Board. It's indeed a privilege and an honor to be here today. A little bit about the College Board. It is a mission-driven, not-for-profit organization that connects students to college success and opportunity. You might know College Board and some of the things that we produce, i.e. PSAT, SAT assessments, and advanced placement, otherwise known as the AP program. Our intended motto is that we want to clear a path for all students to own their own future. And we're here tonight to really celebrate the fact that this particular school district has done that in the last active year. On behalf of the College Board, I'm pleased to share the news that Community Unit School District 200 is one of 447 districts across the United States and Canada that have been selected for the eighth annual AP Honor Roll. This is the fourth time in the last eight years that this district has been recognized with this distinction. Now, inclusion on the AP District Honor Roll is based on examination of three years of AP data, from 2015 to 2017. Districts under AP Honor Roll have simultaneously increased access to advanced court placement coursework, while maintaining or increasing the percentage of students earning scores of three or higher on AP exams. Honor Roll districts defy the expectation that expanding access automatically results in a decline in the percentage of exams earning scores of three or better. I just want to make a small note. I mentioned those 447 districts in U.S. and Canada. We actually take an analysis of all the high schools that offer AP exams and it's very difficult to win this distinction. And we're here tonight to let you know that we want to congratulate you on your success because we know this is something that the district has actively pursued. Because we have people who call our national office and our regional office and asking, what's the secret? How can you do our new district honor roll? And we tell them very simply, work within your organization. And we have seen the fruits of that result with this distinction. So on behalf of the College Board, I'd like to present just a small token of appreciation, this particular distinction. And we also want to know to please keep up your efforts because I want to be able to come back here next year and to give you the exact same. So, thank you very much.
If I could, I want to recognize in Asa the certificates you have. I'd love to make sure that we give that to our high schools. We've got some representatives of both Weeden North and Weeden Warrenville South that have been a part of the effort over the last couple of years to really drive participation and opportunity. And just a word of note around this and I think around the effort. The effort in District 200 has been very strategic toward increasing and opening up opportunities for students that weren't otherwise accessing an advanced placement opportunity. This wasn't an effort to simply drive students that are already taking multiple AP classes to take more. It was a very strategic effort focused on individual students to make sure that any student that has an interest, identifies, you know, that college life experience. And we're very strategic about opening up new opportunities for students that candidly may just not have thought about that opportunity. So if I can introduce our two high school principals, with Babe Claypool and Mr. Matt Biskin. Our assistant principals, we have Nora Campos, Darren Axelson, Julie Pavlini, and, why am I absolute, I'm sorry, Alexia. I've got a momentary blank on your name, Alexia Howard from Weeden North. So, and I don't want to miss Julie Ozenkowski, who is our absolutely bad expert in the district that certainly worked behind the effort. So if I can invite our team to come up and get the certificate from Asa and be recognized by the board, please.
That is truly one of the rewards of serving on this board is to be able to consider one of the cases. And I'll move to public comments on the agenda. The opportunity to speak to the board is provided for members of the public who have a question or comment on the agenda item. The board appreciates Eric and stakeholders' opinions, their thoughts and questions. The board strives to make the best decisions for the district in public, in person, in volume, and it's very helpful. The board must protect its stability and the core of its community. Please remain respectful for the reasons of board and the limited process and the comments tonight. Please use your name and phone, state your name, and go ahead and do your reading of the district. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Please read factual and serious and not include statements of a personal statistic. Respectful, common sense, and members of the board and staff. If any of your matters need to be discussed in more detail, either attend the board's tent or chat, which we have on the Saturday at the School Service Center. Please present your comments to us and write it. The first individual I have signed up is Ms. Karen Shaw. Ms. Shaw?
Hello. I'm concerned about the fact that we've lost two referendums to build a new preschool. And since you last year told us we had $154 million worth of work that we need to be done, including that new preschool. And you need to borrow $132 million to do it. And now you're telling us that the main priest was your top priority and we have the money to do it. You also want, and it said you need a referendum to build a new building. And I actually started digging into the law, the school codes. It used to be that you had to go to a referendum to build a new building, true. There was a card in there that said if you were given grant money, or if you were given a gift from an individual to pay for the building, you didn't have to go to a referendum. 2001, they added the term lease, that if you were renting, leasing a building, you did not have to go to a referendum, you would do a lease for purchase. The word lease not added, the other term lease funds had added. I only brought one copy to give you, but I have a copy of the statute here. I'm going to hand this to you in just a second. So to me, the question is, does it make sense that you can lease a building that doesn't yet exist? I really would like to know from your lawyer, and I'm going to ask some other people who have lawyers, if they'll look at this. And we're going to dig through and find the discussion that went on when the law got changed. When they said you can lease a building, I didn't think they meant, we can do exactly what we would have done anyway without the referendum, as long as we call the loaning instrument a lease that we've got here revenue versus calling a bond that we're going to tax you going forward. Because you see, part of the problem is that money is what we call spendable. It's kind of like you make kids lunch money, and they blow it on movies, and they come back with more lunch money. You can give the money to run the district. You need to run the whole district, go on other schools that need work. If we spend what we have in our reserves right now all on a new Jefferson, what happens when we have another emergency? What happens to all those other high priority things? Now, I can be honest with you, had you done something like Dr. Schuler's upcoming contract was just renewed. Had it renewed without the new benefits, I mean, you added benefits, knowing that he's already overpaid. Had it renewed without benefits? Had you done something with the administrative contracts, and it's nothing personal, guys, but really, you have to give up those end-of-career bonuses. Those never should have existed. And Dr. Schuler, you need to give it up first, so that they'll give it up next, and then we got to hit the teachers. If you do all of that, then you might have the money to build a new Jefferson, still do the rest of the stuff. But the fact that you haven't cut anything, and in fact, you've increased your contract? And then on top of that, you're telling me that this is the biggest thing here? There's a lack of trust in this community, and that's a good reason for it. Let me hand this off to you. There are two pages though. Sorry, my printer is running out of ink, so I'll only make one copy. And I will email it to the whole board afterwards, but I was trying to pull this together this morning. If you cut back on some of the salaries and benefits, bring them back a little more in line. People who are in administration should be paying their own pension contributions, just like the teachers do. There's a whole slew of things that we've pointed out over the years. We have things like all the conferences you go to, the lunches, travel expenses. You cut back on some of that so that there's a little more money, so that you can pay for the existing building maintenance and pay for this stuff. Then I'll actually help you pass a referendum. But I think you need to go to a referendum, not just do this. And I think you really need to look at your stuff. Your low point on the financial flow is the end of May, it's not the end of June. Last year, you were down $6 million at the end of May. What happens if the state's late paying you?
Our next speaker is Ms. Megan Quan.
Good evening. My name is Megan Quan, I'm a resident of Weeden, this district. I decided to come up today and simply just say that I am a supporter of what you're doing for Jefferson. I know that most of the people who get up and talk are not supporters. So I felt that you needed to hear a voice of someone who agrees with you, and to say thank you. I know that it's not easy in the community to do something which warrants this, but it's obviously something that needs to be done. Even people who backed up here and said that they don't want you to do it, recognize it needs to be done. So, thank you for recognizing that. Thank you for working to find a solution when something doesn't work, to move on to something else, and to move on to something else, and something else, to keep trying to make this happen. It really does need to happen, and our young children of our community need to use it. Thank you.
Our next person I have signed up for public comments is Ms. Susan Budden.
Susan Budden, resident, Budden, and she's a resident of the district. My sister was an elite tennis player, which means from the age of about three, I witnessed hundreds of hours of tennis lessons and matches. The maintenance of tennis seems simple, keep your eye on the ball. The act of actually doing so, however, is actually not so simple. Your opponent is always trying to throw you off, to make you run directions you weren't expecting. Things out of your control, like the weather coming to play, descending in your eyes, the wind blows off your shirt tauts. A bird who's kind unknowingly or knowingly distracts you with a sneeze, a camouflage, or a sudden movement. But the skilled players, the great players, know how to strategize, know how to readjust their game mid-match. Know, no matter what is thrown at them, how to keep their eye on the ball. And when a rally doesn't go their way, they always step back up to the baseline to try again. They know that one point, one game does not define the match. For you, the ball for the past five years has been Jefferson. It's just one component in our larger district, but you've always kept your eye on it. Reading the community, adjusting your strategy, navigating the distractions and misunderstandings, and coming back to try again. It has been quite the journey, one in which most of you know I have been an active participant. Am I going to stand up here and be excited about how this is being funded, being enthused that the community voted to trade a $20 per year tax increase in 2013 for $1 million per year out of the classrooms? No, I am not. But am I going to stand up here and support you and stand with you in the corner you were forced into to finally get our youngest learners, knowing all their needs or abilities, facility they and all the teachers and therapists at Jefferson deserve? Yes, I am, 100%. Thank you for your thoughtful efforts. Thank you for always returning to try again over the past five years. And thank you for always keeping your eye on the ball. I hope that you will vote to move the plans forward to Jefferson and that we can finally get this done. Thank you. And I also just want to stay on clear, sorry, I have children here tonight because I'm home, so I can't stay through the discussion. But, so I just wanted to sit back when I leave, but I just apologize, I gotta get a couple of kids home back to bed, so, thank you.
The next person I have signed up for public comments is Carol Sante.
All right, Mary Sante. I'm Karen Sante, I live in the district. My two girls, but, so I'm just hurrying because I'm running through some of my words. So I have a district dependent, and my kid grew up in the district, just like their parents did, including their grandparents, who went to the community high school. Sante has attended 10 of 20 schools in the district, including a few that are no longer. My husband and I know no other district in this district anymore. I currently have a daughter at Pleasant Hill and a daughter at my last year at Jefferson. So my family will not benefit from a new Jefferson, or at least not a family action. I'm not going to tell you how amazing Jefferson is, you guys already know that. You know what amazing, what amazing things they do there. I've seen it firsthand with the daughter, who no longer needs an IP, is intervening early, which allowed her to learn and adapt toward in such a way to, to not thrive in the classroom, which you bring to this district now even speaking. So no, I want to tell you how amazing it is. Instead, I'm going to encourage you to move forward with the planning, the planning of a new school for a little, for our littlest and fragilest learners. How much they need it, and people don't seem to understand what you all do. How important it is to provide these necessary services at our age, and doing so in an appropriate environment is not too much to ask. I wonder how much money the district has put into a building that is not adequate for anyone, let alone these children. As evidenced by the email I recently received stating that the levels of lead in three years of Jefferson, including my child's classroom, are nearing or exceeding the baseline for lead in the water in the school for the four-year-olds. While I know some steps have already been taken to fix this situation, it is just a patch to an outdated building that continues to need money to update and necessary fixes. What will be found next and how much more will cost? So I'm urging you to take future students within our, to take future students within our district into consideration. I'm also urging you to look at the time and the money that is needed to fix a building that is beyond outdated for our students, and for our future students. Please contain your complaints to provide our district, our students, and our future learners with what they deserve, because they deserve a building, accessible bathrooms, things that don't have hot water, coming out of a separate hot faucet, and water that we don't have to worry about. Because you can't put a dollar on the map for our staff and our children. Thank you for considering this.
And the last speaker we have signed up is Carol Monks.
Good evening, Carol Monks, Resident of District 200. I just wanted to pass a few comments regarding some items on the agenda tonight. I'm going to start off with the performance services contract that's being listed. I mean, it's great news that we're trying, you know, we're trying to fix some of the necessities that need to be fixed, especially at Weeden North, because I know this past fall, the kids suffered pretty bad, very hot classrooms for a few days there. But my question is, when it comes to these performance guarantees listed in the contract? And my biggest question is- and my, my biggest question is, how, how do you break out the operational savings that are going to be guaranteed? How are they going to be tracked? And then what happens if the savings aren't met? And I noticed the operational savings per year is almost $54,000 per year. And that's over 10 years, that's 10, for 10 years, it's almost $538,000. Now, that's greater than the cost of the chiller that are being installed. If that's the case, why haven't these chillers been installed early since they have been working for part of two years properly? And next thing is, I noticed there's going to be a discussion about student fees. I just find it hard to swallow that there's a discussion of raising fees again. I know this is the biggest cost of running sports, the salaries and benefits. And the costs are over $1 million just for the high school sports. Let's look at lowering costs before raising fees. And finally, at the last finance meeting, Edon made some public comments about fees. A board member stated that, that the fees should be raised so that parents will feel the pain because a referendum wasn't passed in the last election. Thank you.
And for all public comments, we now move to the next item on the agenda. Mr. Superintendent's report, Edson.
Thank you, Mr. Roman. I have just a couple of things to share with the board, you know, this evening. Under my report at our last board meeting, I shared with the board that we were trying for the first time on Facebook Live event to give the community some insight into the high school incubator classrooms. That took place right before winter break. Please to say that we had a little over 4,000 views of that Facebook Live video. And so we are bringing addition two to the community on January the 25th at 11:30 a.m., where we're going to give the community a Facebook Live glimpse into the Madison Get Fit Lab. So again, we've spent a lot of time, certainly at board meetings and in the community, talking about the future of instruction in technology, fit. What does it mean? What does it look like in terms of how learning is different? We've, we've talked over the last couple of years about some of the shifts in science instruction at the elementary level, and a lot of that's taking place through that Get Fit Lab. And so again, we're going to continue to try to expand those opportunities to give the community certainly one appropriate and some live looks into that. So join us January 25th at 11:30. So if you can't make it for the live event, you can always come back and watch the video as well. Also wanted to share with the board that just recently, I think really, at least in this last couple of days, the results from the 2016 science assessment were finally released. So this was the brand new state test in science that was offered online. Our students took it back in May of 2016, so almost a year and a half ago. And the results have finally been posted or released to the community. So we had students both in grades five and eight that took that assessment, as well as high school biology class. Only the scores from the grades five and eight tests were released. There's 200 of the performance of our students in the science assessment, really exactly spot on to our benchmark districts. I think the state proficiency rate was about 58%. Ours was at 73%, which was exactly the same as all of our benchmark districts. So I got a lot of insight into exactly what those test results mean, but I did just want to share them with the board. Again, that's kind of an autopsy of learning from a couple of years ago, but since it was released, I did want to share that with the board and the community. Last thing that I did want to share is a couple of updates this week around the new evidence-based funding formula. We, so we've shared with the board in the past, under the new evidence-based funding model, a lot more of what was formally rolled into our mandated categorical payments is now a part of our general stated payment, our DSA payment, that comes to us on a much more regular basis. The good news is that those regular DSA payments have still continued to flow through this year. Mandated categorical payments are still behind. So while the state got caught up from all of last year's payments, we are still awaiting payment from this year in the mandated categorical area. But again, that is a much smaller percentage of the state revenue than it has been in previous years because of the funding distribution. The Illinois State Board did write a trailer bill that had some cleanup to the evidence-based funding model. That bill didn't pass both chambers, but it was vetoed by the governor. And so as that process is still working itself out, I've heard there's potentially still some delay on the final evidence-based funding models getting approved. We had originally heard from the state board likely April is when those numbers would be finalized from this year. Then our payments that we've been receiving are kind of a whole harmless payment from last year. We haven't seen the increase that will come this year. That won't be released until the numbers are finalized. But I think I shared last time, thank you to Bill and his staff and Julie Ozempowski, who worked hard to make sure that all of the data points that that evidence-based funding model are based on were accurate. We put a lot of time into making sure that, that all of those numbers were accurate so that our, our number is calculated. So again, we will see that. The Illinois State Board did recently advance its recommendation around school funding for next year. So again, while this year's numbers aren't fully finalized, they are advancing a recommendation that that evidence-based model be fully funded next year. That's a pretty substantial increase in terms of state revenue that we do require to make that happen. So I don't know that it will get funded at that level, but at least the recommendation moving forward is that we, they move to that, that minimum funding level that is suggested through that formula. And I think that's all I've got for today.
Any questions about Dr. Shuler? I have a question. The term evidence-based term in my life, again, I'm not sure I understand that model in general. I hope that you will give more insight on that. But what does that generally mean? How does that differ from what we had in the past? What does that, you know, the concept?
So difference from the past, you might recall under the old funding model, there, there was a foundation level that was set. The foundation level in theory identified what is the minimum funding amount that should be behind every student in the state of Illinois. And so that, that, that foundation level really kind of served as the marker that was used to compare availability of local resources to what it was that the state provided, right? That kind of became the basis for the foundation model. The evidence-based funding model looks a little deeper into the demographic characteristics of the students that are being funded. So the major shift is that it recognizes the cost to educate. A student is not the same for every student in the state of Illinois. There obviously are some regional differences based on where you're located, but there are also other factors like supports that the student is reading or is receiving. So if they're receiving English learner support, and they're receiving special education support, or if a student comes from a disadvantaged home, it recognizes that there are costs associated with educating the students. And so, so basically what it does is it sets an adequacy target by school district instead of simply one, call it adequacy target, that applies to everybody across the state of Illinois. And so the funding model then moving forward will be based on where you sit relative to what the state has defined as your adequacy target. So the state of Illinois, based on the early runs, looks at District 200, has set our adequacy target based on the demographic of our student population, the students that we're serving. And our resources, our current funding, comes to right about 90% of that adequacy target. And so where you sit relative to that adequacy target, kind of stipulated to a tier you fall in, that impacts how much money that you ultimately get through that base funding formula. School districts fall into four tiers. We are going to sit somewhere right between tiers two and three. So tier one are the most needy districts across the state of Illinois in terms of resources, and then it steps up to tier two, three, and then ultimately tier, tier four are the districts that have the highest percentage of local resources available to students. We are somewhere right between tiers two and three. And again, that's just based on that, that percentage of where we sit relative to the adequacy target.
And that adequacy target also takes in prevailing wages. I think seven different regions within the state. So the prevailing wage varies by region, you want to say. But also goes into the other states' model formula that gives you... Are there any other questions or comments, board members? Here are none, we'll move to consent agenda. Please bear with me. The items on the consent agenda are as follows. One, acceptance of gifts for Washington Elementary School. Two, acceptance of gift for Lead North High School Athletic Department, RAC program. Three, approval of post-high school biology textbook for public review and comment. Four, approval of post-high school physics answer textbook for public review and comment. Five, approval of post-high school computer programming textbook for review and comment. Six, approval of post-high school contemporary broadcast media textbook for public review and comment. Seven, approval of post-high school French one textbook for public review and comment. Eight, approval of post-high school German two textbook for public review and comment. Nine, approval of post-high school Spanish one textbook for public review and comment. Ten, approval of open previously closed minutes. Eleven, approval of resolution to authorize transfer of payable interfund loan from working cash fund to transportation fund. Twelve, approval of resolution and final contract and guaranteed energy savings for performance services. Thirteen, adoption of resolution to begin with the 2018-19 budget cycle. Fourteen, approval of bills payable and payable. Fifteen, approval of minutes December 13th, 2007, taken in close, and approval to destroy recordings of close sessions prior to August 22, 2016, withdrawal of my law. And sixteen, approval of personality board to improve employment, resignation, retirement, and leave of captains of the newspaper certified classified and non-union staff. Are there any items board members want to move from the consent agenda? There are none, not for sure.
No additional information other than to, again, thank the two very generous donations to the school district, both Washington School and Lead North High School to the RAC program. Any questions or comments, board members? John?
Yeah, I've got a couple. The, these textbooks are getting, I assume, you know, it doesn't state it, but it, these are both hardback, I'll call them, and digital. Okay, so that, and then on the... Okay, on the resolution to transfer, this is where about the midway point of the year, and we've been effect, already received our entire year's tax money, our real estate tax money, and we're borrowing from the working cash to fund, in this case, the transportation fund. And I heard a comment earlier about the fact that we run out of money in May, and if we use some of that for fund balance, we may not have any left. What, what's causing that problem? And what causes in the past? Is it, or maybe I, go ahead.
No, I was going to say, I'm going to let Mr. Farley address that.
Sure. The, to answer the question about this transfer for transportation, as Dr. Shuler mentioned, we have not received, currently received a quadruple funding yet for transportation, so that is a reason for the loan. The board, obviously, through its fund balance policy is wanting to maintain 25 to 40% fund balance is for the perfect subcash flow, and so we have appropriate cash flow on hand through the low point of the year, which is May of each year, very default, we receive due taxes. So we will annually do loans, interfund loans, and repay them. And that's based on the fact that we maintain a healthy fund balance which the board has worked to do.
I guess the other part of that question, if I, correctly, come on. Wasn't the state very far behind at the end of the last two fiscal years in funding their share of what we get? And therefore, we were very low in cash position? Were we normally low in cash position through May of last year?
Yes, that's correct. We'd only received one of our, one of our categorical payments. And as Dr. Shuler mentioned, there's a good portion of those categoricals are now paid on a monthly basis, so that will include our cash flow. We will also, once transportation money comes in, if you recall during the budget process, and then we updated the board, that our transportation allocation has gone up significantly because it saves more fully funding transportation. So as those funds come in, we anticipate a better cash management position as we refer to in May.
Okay, you mentioned that we received only one. How many would we normally get in a year? How many, the payments that we got, you mentioned we only got one last year, I think you said? Okay, at the end of the, in May, when we were basically running out of cash. What, how many payments are there?
You received four categorical payments. They're captured in September, December, March, and June.
Okay, so three quarters of the categorical funded for the year wasn't received in May. Is that a fair statement? Okay, so thus creating that low cash position. Not that we're flush with cash, but it was extremely low because of those issues. Okay, that's very helpful, I agree with you. Thank you.
And particularly low in that fund. So this loan is to the transportation fund. That remains one of the areas funded by categoricals. So while we got caught up on those four payments from last year, we are in a cycle of being behind. So that's the fund right now most at risk.
And then on the, the area about the guaranteed energy savings and performance services, with performance services. We've approved a number of contracts over the years that have been similar to this. And so we get a number of a cost, and then we get a savings. Now, in theory, that cost is to install the equipment when we, okay? We buy it when we need, right? We don't buy ahead of time, do we? Okay, just want to make sure of that. So when we buy that equipment, what we're saying is that we have a recapture period in which we save dollars and other energy costs that would otherwise have occurred over the, over some cycle of time, in this case, about 10 years of this, to basically pay for that equipment, buying the savings of the utility costs that would have gone on. Is that a fair statement? Okay. Do we, now, when we get these estimates like this, we get them from, from our consultants? And do we then track that in some way? Or are we really kind of looking back on these things, you know, like, you know, next year, we're going to have this? Do we track or somehow kind of test to make sure that's been achieved?
Mr. Farley's inviting Mr. Robbins to come up and comment on that.
Yes, he did. And we're getting a report done right now. We've got one from last year, the first two pages. And we're sitting about $29,000 greater savings that we were guaranteed. And when the other three come in, we will present it to the...
Okay, so that, we do track, and that's what we did a couple of years ago. I guess, again, just to make, make it clear, why didn't we do this? Why didn't we buy this project three years ago? Why, why do we do it? Do we need to do it, I guess, from your question?
Yeah, in this, this case, the chiller... One kind of follow-up to that is I go to Lead North. There's a chiller incentive that requires us to get the work complete by June 1st, which is before the end of school. So we're just going to get it purchased. We're going to get this product, which we've purchased. It takes about 14 minutes to install it. And it should be on site before June 1st or the end of May.
And I was going to ask the same question about kind of historical works. One comment on number 10 here. So Mr. P. Yen, I have the pleasure of reviewing these closed minutes every six months or so.
closed minutes every six months or so, and we try to be as open and transparent as possible. There are some items out here that carry some degree of confidentiality and sensitivity, and we have to open these with redactions. So the list of closed items is very small compared to, you know, the volume that we review every month, so just recognize that there's some things that we have to maintain that's closed for Brian, for the reasons of some...
Could you explain a little bit what you said? When you say closed, we have minutes that are from closed session, and we've seen those minutes, and in our copy of those, there's a yellowed-out section, which is personal, for instance, on expulsion, doesn't make it personal, and things like that. Okay, and/or there might be some other thing related to contract negotiations and so on. So those are mine doubts, so that's not public information. What is closed? That's what I'm confused.
We need minutes from our... And the closed just means they're not available for public review. Every minute that you review and approve are posted publicly. Obviously, there are certain exceptions that allow you to go into executive session, those are defined by school code. Those minutes then are not available for public review until the board has determined that it's no longer necessary to close the minutes, right? As Mr. Paulson mentioned, a lot of those minutes have to deal with individual students, individual staff members, obviously, issues that they, that it's not appropriate for them to be available.
And just kind of one other comment on item 13, the budget cycle. So, you know, this is the first time we've really entered the budget cycle since I dropped it off front in last April, so this is, I think, the first time we've really had a chance to make change over that, and trying to address our Sherman Burgess policy and some of the other facility needs we have. So, you know, I think as we go into this, I'd like to request you kind of look at this through an additional lens. I'd like to get some additional options and scenarios presented to us. We had some of that presented to us right after the rough running last spring, as we got into the summer, but this is the first time we've had more, you know, more opportunities within our school life, so to speak, to look at some of our bigger budget cycles. I think, you know, as we get into the cycle, I'd like to request options, scenarios, sort of retail analysis, maybe even more stringent than in the past.
Question for you, being part of the finance committee, I'm not quite clear what you just said. Can you kind of give me an example? What's up about like the revenue side or the expense side? What do you talk about?
Well, I think it's something about the expense side. And, you know, when the rough running passed in April, we were passing the window where we could make some change on that. Our biggest budget item, which is salary spend, was pass-through. Now, we get into that, that conceited work putting on the table. We looked at fees, we looked at other preferred costs, the software that we were going to look at, putting in place this year, looking for... I guess my point is, this is the first budget cycle since we're up front, where we have more tools and toolkits, more things that we can look at on the expense side. So I just want to make sure we look as comprehensively as we can at all of our options, because we still have a policy. Whether we can get to it, no more than's in that policy, that's like, really painful, but, you know, I'd like to see how far we can get, and have the board have choices, more choices than we do normal, to try to inspire posts in that Sherman Burgess policy.
One thing I guess is a point mentioned by the board, so your January, you know, the whole meeting, is when you review your five-year financial projections, and so I think that's the time to have conversations when you get a look ahead at your financial situation to kind of understand in what years you need to make some of these decisions.
This one follow-up comment, I mean, I think tonight, we're going to be looking at a little bit of it, and that's going to be the fee side. And that's really the first look that we're taking at, and an item that's coming down the road. That's one of the topics that I think you're referring to right now, is, you know, we have to look at that piece, we're going to have to look at benefit costs, we're going to have to look at all these things. But realistically, tonight is the first night we really start to look at some of those, based on, you know, now the opportunity to change some, as we're going to be going through next year. So, you know, and again, part of the finance committee, we really, just to kind of explain that, is we really deferred any decision at our level, Mr. Danny Yanni and I, because we thought there was a board-level discussion, we're just discussing that tonight a little bit, and we talked about fees. So it's right in response to what your thoughts are, you know, and, you know, I think that's the challenge we're facing. Thanks.
And that item, fees, is just the first time our plan's going to be at spring, and we're going to find a problem, and it's supposed to come on this spectrum, and we focus on it even more, and it puts it on the map, since we aren't in the new budget cycle. Are there any other questions or comments?
Yes. There were several items about posting textbooks for public review. I'm not actually pretty sure if that actually, I mean, what are the process services followed to review that?
Information's on our website, so we post what textbooks are available for review. Copies of those books are located at the district office, and right off the top of my head, and without faith here, I don't want to misstate where else they're available, but I think they are also available some other locations, but it just needs, physically, the textbook is available for somebody to come in and review it and or check it out and take a look at it.
I do have one on the right, and I have to say, item 16, the approval of personnel report, I think we're going to really miss some of the people in that report. It's going to be the challenge to replace them. Forgot my name.
Okay, I have a motion and second to approve the consent agenda, Mr. Devin.
Second.
Move on the standing. Second, Mr. Paulson, this is the student chief, Tom Rule.
This is Grant Green.
Yes.
Mr. Paulson.
Yes.
Mrs. Erickson.
Yes.
Mr. B V I.
Yes.
Mr. Manlon.
Yes.
Mr. Madison.
Yes.
Mr. Brown.
Yes, the consent agenda has passed. We now move to action items. The one action item we have is the proposal received to design development phase for early childhood centers project, if that's true.
Thank you, Mr. Paulson. So I'd invite Mr. Sudden to come up and join us at the podium. So this, a little bit of history on this item, the board, number of meetings ago, I guess, probably approaching, almost a year ago, post, sorry, it's not quite a year ago, we'll post the referendum, we looked at feedback from the community, looked at the items that you had identified that still do remain needs that we have within our buildings, but did some prioritizing and identified two issues that you wanted, three issues that you wanted to address right away, a solution to the early learning center, secure entries, and again, our most significant capital needs across the district. And so, just my way of reminder, both for the board and certainly for the community, if you go back to your capital improvement plan, deep bulk, almost all of your condition one, year one capital items were issues that you have at Jefferson Early Learning Center. And so, as the board looked again at solutions around addressing that most significant need, you began exploration again of options to address that facility in a way that both met the learning requirements within that building, but I think was thoughtful in the use of community resource to address those solutions. And so that took us through, I think, a very thoughtful study that kind of got us zeroed into the option that you are looking at this evening, which is a replacement of the early learning center that again will be funded through a lease certificate financing agreement. So you approved the timeline at your last meeting, not your last meeting, I think, I didn't even remember, and that brings you to this evening, where you're going to see the schematic design with ultimately a recommendation to continue to move on with the design process. So, Sudden?
Thank you, Dr. Schuler. Tonight with me, Lauren Johnson, from my office on the design under project, and Joe Popnickles, construction manager. Thank you for this opportunity. As Dr. Schuler said, back November, we began this process, so about nine weeks ago, which you're seeing tonight represents what we've been doing over the past nine weeks, to move the design forward over that time period with some of the core team, which consisted of a couple of board members, key staff, staff members, Jefferson as well, we've met four times now, gotten together to review and review the project alone. So during that time, really, just what you have in front of you tonight, so you have a book, two things, a book, and then you also have this presentation, that's kind of the general overview of the schematic design phase. Tonight, some of the stuff you saw at our last board meeting, update, but it's a refresher, but it's really all part of the same package. So tonight, what we're going to cover is the program, and then get into the schematic design, plenty of the site plan, where the floor plan sits today, then get into some of the images of the building, and recap it off the budget review, and then... So with that, really, the program, as I said, program hasn't changed from last time. We're still looking at about $41,000, $54,000. That is down from the original reference plan, although we have $45,300, and that's really represented by 14 classrooms, which is 16, and then some other modifications in time, in terms of consolidation. And so, as we see here, back actually in 2013, we were almost $60,000 square feet. 2017, $45,300, and current, $45,100. And some of those things we looked at, you know, how do we take care of shared office space and things of that, where we look at a shared staff room and a separate teachers' lounge area, and we consolidated into a student current resource, so just one of the ways to really consolidate. In terms of facilities, we held this comparison here in terms of size, overall square foot and square foot, square foot in the classroom, and really just doing, the overall comparison, also showing how their moments vary. I think here at early childhood, at the Jefferson Early Childhood Center, we don't have that shown necessarily, we have what current Jefferson is, and that's actually just what's on site. AM session, AM session, 165, it's like, and 133. There is talk though, actually, as those programs change and evolve, we may actually want more students in the more grounded classroom, so I think that's sort of the new target, maybe it was on 14 rooms, so I think that's what we're, I think we're going to jump to that. Getting into the plan, overall site, we're just in site, so right now, we're still, we're looking at potentially, one of the things we're working on, we've gotten soil boring, we've had surveys done, we've got the background pulled together, right, so that we can move forward. One of the things worth talking with the city is, there's currently a gateway, about 33 feet wide, an old road that's coming through, we're actually looking at getting that vacated, which we're going to get up, be part of your property. It would involve us to potentially shift the footprint of the building further west a little bit, and also assist with our stormwater, getting that rather around the back of the building, help to... And we started out a while back, actually before, I guess, the referendum in November, some of the initial design concepts we started with, we looked at just mental organizations of the site, so once we made the decision, we, if you remember, we had shown various concepts in terms of where we, or where the building might go. So one idea was all written row, we talked about some other facilities renovating. One of the design, the initial design concepts was, and then once we came back here, we had done some previous work back prior to the referendum, in terms of the organization of the building and where it potentially sits on the site, and really, that was our starting point. So we didn't, that's one thing that allowed us to move forward fairly quickly, taking advantage of that, and then we called the original ones, the main activity operation zone, the office zones, and the classroom zones in the center, oriented in the building, so that we could take advantage of north light orientation. That was one of the original design concepts. In terms of the site, now, the decisions are going to be made, we're building as far north as possible, but maintaining existing parking lot during construction, obviously you can see where that, in terms of maxing where that sits, with our activities, elements of outdoor, more into play areas here, and then adding support upfront, really trying to do this in such a way that we can push the building as far north as we can to maximize building green spaces and save as much play space to the south as possible. So the current, as I said, so the current schematic design shows that, the outline is where we will build in laws, that area, once the construction starts, that this will allow us, offers only the for the school to maintain operation, to have a sustaining operation all the time, and then once that's, once they're out, or once we're appointing early, then, again, construction, unless construction's starting for, we'll be able to take it over the bound, and develop our stormwater areas and parking lots. So overall, this is kind of where we're at, snapshot of time at the end of this phase. We're still working with the design team and core team to go through, and we'll continue to massage that into the next phase as we get more information about the campus and where those things go. But the main entry coming in from here, the main visitor entry, faculty, student drop-off, bus drop-off up front, or drop-off on the side, which that's over there on the slide, that kind of comes into the, you know, off axis to the outdoor learning play area, and then exiting out also on this side entrance exit, access to that from a large motor. One of the things that we have learned from staff when we originally were looking at this, developing this space, I think early concept show, this is a sensor garden, so what we actually talked about was trying to develop this more into an outdoor learning space, but also looking at it as large motor, for a secure large motor. One of the things, kids are riding on the playground area with tricycles and just a lot of large motor activity, some of that, it's nice to have another area, it's a different activity than the playground and the equipment on the playground, so it just helps separate those and allows another opportunity to space to go out to. But again, you know, the organizations, the classrooms, Lauren, once you uncover the office, the...
So as you can see in the diagram here, this is a triple classroom pod. It's two classrooms organized around a therapy space slash office space and a restroom area. The building has seven of these pods, each classroom is paired as, are the two, and so what this area does is it allows for the actors guidelines, as defined by the state of Illinois, to be present in each classroom, each classroom is identical, which allows for lower cost of construction, ease operations, and familiarity within each space. And then each classroom itself has separated interest areas in terms of walk play, library space, dramatic play, toys and games, math, music, and literacy. And then, as you can see in the center here, as I said, there's a restroom area, space for teachers and staff to have a desk, and then do separated integrated therapy with student, or group of students, and then there's an area for a technical space that we identified in each pod. So moving forward on this slide, we've done a couple of studies in building section, so if you took a piece of the building and cut it, and looked at it from the side, we can start to study how that looks. So we've started by identifying areas where we can reduce costs from this standpoint, and one area is by structurally sloping the roofs, you can lower our cost of roofing insulation, and you can also lower the number of roof drains in the building, simplify constructions and find costs. And then you can also get a pretty good look at the construction of the building by the design plans.
Well, as I said, not just, not just the design, not just the architectural side, but also our civil engineers, our mechanical engineers have also begun, structural have begun starting their conceptual design along the building. So from civil, they started looking at what height do we place the building at in terms of balancing the site with slopes and graded site, but it's actually... actually from the far south end of the site up to the north end here, there's probably almost a, and you wouldn't know by standing up, there's almost a foot drop if you go along the site. So we'd have to look at how do we place that, maintain the existing parking lot, where is that floor level replaced, and how does that affect the site in terms of cut and fill, and how we balance all that. So the civil engineers are working on that, also looking at how do we get the stormwater. So one of the things you, as I mentioned earlier, about the ease of the right way, is that this will allow them to get their services along here. And also, there is also a falloff as you go from the rest on the site. So we have to transition the building. So instead of just having a big plateau off the side, we have to transition that smoother, and that's prepared for a longer one. And one of the concepts we're looking at right now, in terms of collection and parking lot, looking at utilizing bio-solvents to collect, and clean them off before it goes into the basin, and we're looking at a bulk around stormwater solution framework. In terms of mechanical systems, we've talked, we've talked about many different systems. Again, in terms of the core team model, we've kind of narrowed it down to two, and we're studying both, you know, option one is looking at geothermal. You know that that's probably, we're hearing, probably initial like three hundred fifty to four hundred thousand dollars, higher than what this, the other system is, but you also have to look at that in terms of payback, and depending on that cost, again, we're from a, you know, it's a loan, fourteen year payback on that system. But that's also something that probably fits the board goals, or board policy level, in terms of energy efficient systems. So we're also looking at very simple low cost upfront. But the big things right now, we're, we're on our way to this core team model, and talk back and forth about, you know, what we can bring representation in terms of the best direction. But we are, we're studying these new systems right now. You know, you have volume and maintenance, system flexibility in terms of pros of the geothermal, because it's a system, so it can act computer cooled and heat in time based on demand, considering the ability and operating the building. You're also utilizing the, instead of having a chiller, which would undercut some noise on site, without neighbors, you're using groundwater to, for your cooling and then dissipate it. And the two pipe system, it has a lower upfront cost. You use high efficiency equipment, high efficiency boilers, you can clean up lots of individual controlled rooms. It's very similar to what you have in a lot of buildings now. You know, now, there's this unique vertical system, it's still very similar to the systems you've had in a lot of buildings today, where you've got classrooms and that. Things we've done in terms of noise, that creates, depending on where those, which are placed, which impacts it a lot. And you do have signal change, but you have to put it into the, we're looking at. Outdoor spaces, one of the things, you know, the design team, so the core team's really broken up also the design team, where we have, that focuses more with the staff, with the staff and the her staff. And one of the things that we're looking at now, we actually conducted while we were doing all the core meetings in between, this facility, we're looking at some of the things that are out there, buildings, facilities that were built, what they did, and how they solved certain problems. But some of the spaces, this is just more images of what these spaces would be, and actually staff is looking at that now, and what types of sensory and play elements they'd like incorporated into the outdoor learning area. So some of these, you know, involved, just as I talked about, open walk areas that the kids arrive, sand and water tables, dramatic play areas, small states set up. But also, we're starting to look soon with a running state that's on there to start looking at designing the point, to develop the, the, as well.
So we're going to see a couple of images of what the building could look like, and the size of these are conceptual, they are not guarantees of what the building will look like, just potential ideas for the image of the building. So this would be our deep south, this is Stapleton. So this is the north end of the building. What you're seeing is the brick treatment on the admin area. So this is the student parent resource center, and then admin office is in the entry. And then you're looking at the slightly taller volume for the classrooms, you give them a little bit more volume in the classroom. And then another main trick here, which we're expecting can be. And then we transition to the southeast. So this would be from that plate area to the south looking north. So again, you're seeing a brick treatment on the admin area, you're seeing a brick treatment on the operations and large motor area, and then a similar lighter treatment of the classroom bar. Door windows in the classroom bar are slightly varying height and slightly varying in size, because of a playful treatment to indicate its use as a early childhood center. What you're seeing here is the outdoor learning courtyard inside of the building, looking toward the main entry. So we have this projecting canopy to bring, to bring light and light through the main entry into the courtyard, and to connect those new spaces. And then this would be a potential image for the main entry. You're seeing that canopy come through, the name of the school in stainless steel lettering on the building. And then glass, glass use for open and secure entry, looking into the admin office, looking in through the, into the courtyard, and then to the right, the student and resource center. This is a potential rendering for the inside of the classroom, looking at a drop ceiling, with a potential light bulb at a taller window. This allows natural light to reflect and balance in the room differently than how traditional window does. And then you're looking at this opening here into the integrated therapy space, the door into the walkrooms on the right, and then a case work counter and sink in the middle.
Good evening, I'm trying to be brief. We have, we have modified the budget. I would say the budget value has been reduced by four hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars approximately. That's a product of the four major components, most of them are under the construction management. And I lose one D construction and fee to, to reduce the refining C and V from four and a half to five percent, down to three and a half percent, which led to a differential of approximately a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Item number two, general conditions with placeholder of eight percent for general conditions, as the scopes continue to evolve, clearly, the refining count to eight hundred and forty thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars, which leads to a differential of approximately a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And then along with that, would be our protection engineering fees. So adds our CM idol to suggest that we refine the A U fees to be a mark by top of any cost, like this associated. So as ours doesn't refine, so the E fees. So this slide, refinement and protection engineering fee of about twenty thousand dollars. And then finally, owner's costs, there were too many components, owner's costs that we're able to, to reduce, and make, that identify those that overlap owners in CO testing. We need my general condition nine item, which pairs with CO testing. We also add conditions for testing under our owner's costs, we're able to refine that a little bit. It's a majority of that hundred thousand dollar differential that we're able to pay out. And then also, refining under commission at the crucial building. I don't think we're going to be shooting leads, or if we take that commission placeholder, we get carried down to the full commission of the crucial building. With regards to scope to work, we have not changed that. We're still working with our same placeholders. Over the next few weeks, we will be updating that, like, based on the schematic design, and how, as well as other additional design information that we have at this point.
Little quick question. So the post-construction cost of ownership, that would be pretty much demolition of the building? What's, what is that in that, that line? The post-construction cost of ownership, what is that, that for?
If you, if you go to the next page, it presents four items. You've got furniture pictures, equipment, some technology equipment, building demolition, and then the construction of an outdoor play space.
So all of the furniture would be covered in this, right?
So just a quick comment or question on this. So I'm happy to see that we got below seventeen million dollars as a, as a total. But as you outlined, the changes were kind of below the construction cost, these door additions, etc. But yeah, I feel like we made a point with design decisions that should be, you know, reducing the cost a little bit, but yet the cost per square foot for the building is still like two hundred and twenty-five dollars a square foot. So can you talk a little bit about kind of that push and pull on the design side to maintain that, or evaluate whether that should even go higher or lower?
I think we're going to answer that in the next, in the upcoming few weeks here, now that we're processing this, the current schematic design. That's already, you started seeing change in budgeting values in the different scope store.
So, Zeddy, you're going through an estimating process, of design concepts embedded within this?
Can you go back to the facility comparison for me, please? This one would be the next one, forward please. So, I guess I'm confused. I'm looking at, as we go, I think you have two hundred fifty-six students in the AM, two hundred thirty-two students in the PM, eighteen classrooms, and only that thirty-nine thousand eight hundred. How, how can that be, when we're one sixty-six and one thirty-three, with fourteen classrooms and almost forty-one thousand six hundred square feet? How does, how does that work? I don't understand that math.
A lot of this depends, so, facilities, I mean, these facilities are not necessarily apples to apples. They may not have certain spaces that you do, so they probably don't have a resource center. We were just kind of comparing in terms of classrooms. Every program is not that. So, they may have taken common space, so they've taken some common space and they've created therapy space out in the middle of their open common space, because that school, I believe, was kind of a minimal design, and they had a large center space, like a play area outside of, we would go to say, five or six classrooms. But then they don't necessarily, they have fairly small large motor room, probably maybe the size of half the space, which was woefully undersized. So, while there's certain features there that may have been good, they didn't have, they didn't have other features. So, our program has been developed over, you know, quite, actually quite a long time, and we're working on developing this program in terms of fitting the orderings and what, and what you're doing here. So, that, that part of it's probably not as great in comparison just because of the fact that every building that becomes located in terms of what's important.
I was kind of looking at the schedule, and I, I just did a couple of calculations. But if I took the, you know, the, mostly the AM session, and, you know, that seems to be the larger number of students in every place, and I divided that by the square footage of every one of them, with the exception of, you know, the one, the last one on the bottom, which, you know, was way out of line, it seems like, you know, to take that three thirty-nine out, you know, everybody else is under two hundred, you know, basically under two hundred square feet per student, with the exception of Barrington, which is indicated as an addition. So I, I'm, you know, I'm concerned that, you know, and we're averaging on this example here of the enrollment's one sixty-six, you know, like two hundred and fifty per student square footage, you know, which is, you know, above the norm, right? You know, it seems, you know, that's kind of a big deal, right? You know, I, I'm trying to get this thing in under, you know, numbers here. And it seems like, you know, based on those kinds of statistics, I mean, we're, you know, like that ten percent extra space or something, right?
Well, again, some of these two, some of these programs, if you look at District Fifty-Nine, they are primarily more acute need students. So a lot of the classrooms, you can only hold twenty kids. The current enrollment in those rooms, they can only put ten or fifteen, or twelve, ten, twelve, usually ten, especially if you have kids with severe needs. So that kind of skews that as well. Where in the area, I'm kind of in the area, I'm sorry, Brooklyn, Oswego, that might have been more tuition based, so they're putting twenty kids in a classroom. So again, some of these aren't, it's more, this is more just, you know, it's, it's nice information to have, but every one of the programs is different. So to take them, to compare them exactly apples to apples across the board, really is not fair comparison, I guess.
You know, I generally agree with that, that each one's different, but literally every one of them has less square footage than the two fifty, every, you know, every, every one of them, you know, except for Barrington, which is then an addition. I don't know, it probably, I'm trying to get over that hurdle of what's the right size, or what, you know, and, and I'm, I'm looking here at almost a hundred thousand dollars a square foot per student. And it's, you know, a hundred and sixty-six students divided by almost sixteen, sixteen million dollars is about mine.
Good thing, I, I can answer that question in, in one way that I think is important to consider. Is that me, can you join us for just a quick second for this? So I, I apologize, I've been preoccupied with this question in advance, but to become compliant with least restricted environment requirements, something that we're citing for every year in our program, because we don't have enough blended opportunities for kids. If we became fully compliant within this facility that we've designed, what would likely be our enrollment by session? So those classes that become blended, would have how many students in them?
We're looking at somewhere between seventeen to twenty students in a class, depending on how we are operating the program. So right now, we're looking at some level funding or graded funding for preschool for all. So they have certain requirements for those programs. So in those classrooms, we have seventeen students. We have other classrooms that we operate that, that requirement is twenty students. So within that classroom, the percentage of special education students, who students are typically developing, would have to be thirty-seven. So we, right now, are at a fifty-fifty ratio with our students. So in order to meet the requirements, we would need to have more students who are tuition paying, are typically developing through the classes. So right now, our classes are unusually small. We probably increase each of our classes right now about ten more students, unadvised.
Just based on what you said, we had seventeen each classroom, we had fourteen classrooms. Our, our kind of enrollment then would be, like, two hundred and thirty, ten, forty, which would predestined to a cost average, or a classroom size average that would be closer.
And again, I just, I want to note that we have open tuition paying options, as well as we've got, I think, some opportunities in the works in terms of expanding some of our grant opportunities that we're paying students in to help balance that least restricted environment. So I, I guess all I wanted to say is, you're absolutely right if you use our enrollment number now, but we are not at our ideal enrollment, because again, we are not absolutely fulfilling that least restricted environment option. So, we're not near capacity. If, as you look at the design of this building, and look at what the, what the target enrollment would look like, I think it brings the numbers much more in line with what you're looking at. But haven't our enrollment trends been pretty flat for many years in that school? They have for students that are qualifying with a special education need. So again, I don't anticipate that trend changing in terms of students that are qualifying with a special education need. But again, we're cited every year for not providing that service within the least restricted environment. Then the only way to expand that is to expand either some tuition paying options, again, to serve more students. We don't need any more space. The, the only difference is, we're going to have eighteen students in a classroom, rather than having eight students in a classroom, both of which have to be sized the same. So if we're serving eight kids in an instructional model, self-contained instructional model, we still need the same space. So, so you're, you're right, I don't anticipate that our trend would suggest that students that are qualified with a special need for the program will necessarily increase. But in order to blend those classrooms and provide the, the service in the least restricted environment, we have to expand both some tuition paying options, as well as some of our grant funded tuition options.
In that response, I'd like, you know, maybe to expand this analogy, I didn't get over the term. And, and I'd like to see- And, and I'd like to see maybe, you know, on these other districts that we're comparing here to or others, I don't care, of, of, you know, number one, what is the mix supposed to be, fifty-fifty, whatever, and whether these districts are achieving that, and, you know, and that is why we need to do this. So that, you know, that would help me get over the hurdle a bit. You know, my biggest concern here, I guess, I, I don't know where I'm going with it, you know, I, I think this is operational money, okay, and, you know, it's coming out of a different place. And it's really, not that, again, if we had a referendum past, this would be different, but the reality is this is, you know, these are real kind of significant dollars to me, that we're, you know, we have a limited amount of operating revenue, we're going to be looking at potential freezes on that, so these are serious dollars that are going to affect not only these students in this early learning, but, you know, everybody else in the program too. So, you know, I think this is very, this to me is a critical analysis, and I really, you know, I want to do as much as we can to justify these numbers, and that's where I want to get to.
I have a question too. If we're going to be comparing ourselves to other facilities, it might be interesting to know what year, for instance, each of those facilities came online, so we know that we're comparing ourselves to state-of-the-art, or if somebody else that's woefully outdated like we are, what's wrong?
That's a good comment because I know the warning, the one in the Prairie School District Two Oh Four is probably two decades old, probably built in the early, mid-nineties. I know, I was involved in the truth, it was personal, those were all in the last seven or nine years, I believe, with the bill and the displays. So, but that's a good point. I mean, the models have changed a little bit. You know, one of the, one of the numbers that's driving up the displays project, and this goes to reinforce the point that every district has a youth program. The, the Des Plaines School District has a very, very large community room in that addition. They relocated their district office to part of that existing elementary school, so they wanted to host Q and A events, but scroll about the square footage of the early childhood edition, you can see that at fifty-one thousand square feet. So how are things going to fluctuate? I think the team, you know, staff, everybody's done a really good job of narrowing this program down, we've made some decisions to keep, keep programs at Johnson School, keep a program at the Year School. You know, as I look at this design, some of the assumptions, there's, this is not an overdesigned, overprogrammed building right now. I think there's still opportunities, but there's nothing in here that I would say that it's, you know, over and above what we should expect.
You know, your comment about the displays, actually, they are one of the lowest square foot per student. They're, you know, it's a hundred and sixty-four students. To take the community center out of there and all that, I, you know, that's, that's even about the opposite direction of what I'm concerned with. You did a good job of designing that.
Yeah, it's something that they have created us, and you created us, and they're experiencing their class sizes, using some of those.
Or maybe classrooms sort of kind of either program. And I think that's the point that, you know, I have no doubt, based on my experience, that when this building gets completed, we're not going to have a problem filling out the tuition this program. I think a lot of the dialogue over the last four, five years might be pushing away some of our students, but when this comes online, I don't think any of those minimum requirements are going to be a problem. We're going to have a way anymore, it's like they need to have kind of a regular tuition pay system in the school.
Yeah, I, I don't disagree with that, but I don't want to build a program on the narrative, we aren't intended for, you know, to compete with Tinsley or something. You know, I, I think we're really trying to focus on the students, special needs type students or the special, you know, the special instruction students that, you know, and whatever the balance has to be, you know, that's fine, but, you know, again, I don't want to, I'm not here, you know, we're not building this to, you know, put up, again, a, you know, a, I'll call it public competitive early learning.
I'm not suggesting that, given that tuition-based students, the level that these students are allowed to comply with law. It's not competitive, but to me, minimum requirements for law.
What's that, fifty-fifty, forty?
Seventy-thirty.
How many?
Seventy-thirty.
Seventy what? The needs?
No, seventy percent typically developing.
And what are we at now in this?
About fifty-sixty, and we've been working up towards that number.
I got a couple more comments here. First off, I think this is a good kind of summary, consolidated summary of the first phase of work, where it's cement design is usually about fifteen to twenty percent of the overall design effort.
Correct.
And I'd like to see some of the areas that I've raised, and some of the early meetings have been addressed, I'm comfortable with the decisions we made on the pitch, and next year, I'm happy to see this blow. Seventeen million dollars. If you recall, when we did the audits, Jim Matheson has like tabs and things that he wants to point out to the board, so I'm going to, I'm going to play Jim for tonight on this. If you go to the floor plan, yeah, I'm going to try. If you go to the floor planners, it's really just like a comment that I think, that I think I'd like to ask you guys to continue working at. So the back, if you look at the west side, which is on the top, that little L hook back there, can we describe, kind of, I realize why the large motor room has to be separated from the building for new legal requirements which can apply to many of these other buildings. Can you talk about that space and then I have one more comment on the floor plan.
Sure. One of the, one of the things we had talked about was an opportunity to start activating some of the spaces along main corridor and along the upper learning play area, and one of the things you're talking about is either some sort of like therapist stair or seating area where you can use it as like a small instruction space. We also talked about potentially for indoor or, well, maybe a smaller piece of play.
I guess, I see that as an opportunity, I agree, looking at these search enrollments on the outside of that. I was just kind of wondering, in the west side of the building, there's a little bit back there after hours. Maybe there's an opportunity, if you think about being prepared to a four, they've got that rock door, patio, maybe something like that.
Right, so yeah, so one of the things you could do, yeah, you could have, you could have this, I think you did this, you did this fifty-nine inch wall or between the buildings, they didn't want to have the, the buildings open, so we actually built fencing or a wall element there, and we actually turned that into some additional outdoor space and used those as.
And then the other opportunity that I think, I'd like to see you guys talk, or look at as we go forward is, so you've got these two long, I mean, east-west corridors that span the classrooms, and they look pretty traditional at this point in time, and I think one of the really great features of the early childhood department is how to activate those classrooms to learn. And so if you look at the New York Childhood Center, I'm not familiar with some of the other ones, but that's a great opportunity to pull out, have some, some different kind of motor skills, tactile environments, etc. So I think there's design opportunity to continue to explore there. And I think, you know, as you continue, you help render explore this design, that's a great opportunity. If you go to the next slide, I guess a question, so if I look at this, you have the pair of toilet rooms on the outside wall, and you have the mechanical system on the inside wall. Can you talk a little bit about that decision of why you wouldn't kind of move the toilet rooms inbound? Is there, is there a programmatic or functional reason why that's the case?
I think it had more to do with where the distribution is coming from, for the mechanical use, again, it just depends on which ones they are. That's certainly something we could look at further. That's, if we did end up going to the other system, like, you know, maybe that's better served where you can direct throw from outside, depending on what system they're using. So, so if you want, it's a, it's a good point, that was one of my other points here. So we have this, one of the board and another, we have this open decision point in terms of the mechanical system, so how we need to pool the building. We have two options in front of us. The geothermal heat system, which is really very energy efficient, really the ideal long-term solution. It's costly more initially, but it's, but it's less long-term, less operational system, lowest, lowest investment in actual equipment in the building. We have the other system, which is really a two-pipe unit ventilator system, which is probably about as bare bones as you can get. I don't imagine too many new schools being designed these days with a two-pipe unit ventilator system. So I think, you know, I'd like to see a lot more analysis as it comes to the, the team in terms of the payback areas, so the payback years, the operational costs, etc. There's a decision, if we go at the face, in the option two, where do we put these unit ventilators? They have to fit in this classroom somewhere, usually they're on the outside wall. That, that outside wall is really activated for learning opportunities that create an acoustic issue within the classroom, which is a very unique situation and sensitivity for this age group. So I think that decision's important. I realize and I agree with the budget challenge we have, but I'm a little nervous about creating a, making a decision which is a short-term game, but long-term is really not the right decision. So I think that's, I just want you to know that it's a big decision there, I know, I have strong feelings within the team of a right solution, but I think I'd like to see a little bit more analysis of that, recognizing that if you make the geothermal system, it may end up a different budget challenge. I think there's one more, I think. Can you talk a little on those next to your memories?
I get the, the names summary around the kind of east wing and the west wing. Can you talk about the material selections on the classroom lease, at least some of your initial thoughts?
Well, right now, what we're exploring is a potential for, it's called a rain screen system, but it's basically a cement board, looking at like a vertical, putting more natural materials, trying to, we had some, I think there's some images in the, there's some images of trees in the forest, we're trying to just bring in some more natural materials and just set that off. Not that that can't, I think one of the things Joseph would have to come to cost and maybe weigh some of these things too, but that's just, it was one of the materials which, you know, something to set the classroom bars apart from functional, I guess.
I, I like the idea. I'm just curious what the system, you know, material would be in that one.
If you go to the classroom rendering, I realize it's very, very preliminary, but stuff like that, I mean, there's a lot of work that you do in that, in that rendering and design, talk about materials, that kind of outdoor wall, outside walls, not really a very inspiring, this rendering, so this is one of the renders I'd love to be able to show off to the people, but I don't think it's rendering material yet, but as I mentioned, we're still very, very early in the design process, a lot of decisions have been made. But overall, I'm happy with where we are in the process. You know, I think as a board, we talked about having timelines and milestones to proceed with the next step. The schedule is necessary to meet our targeted opening date of April or August nineteen. If we miss that date, it does add some pretty substantial cost potential to, to the project. So I would support moving to the next stage of the design process right now. I'm working on a lot more of these details moving on the line.
Any other thoughts and comments, the board members?
You mentioned the team. What is the team, who's our people that are involved with this analysis? Obviously Brad and Rob are, and what about our staff, who's, who's involved? I assume they're all on board with this design.
Yeah, so the, it's Mr. Farley, it's Phil Robinson, it's a little farther from the building. We've got three members of the Jefferson staff that are a part of the core team, especially around some of the design. Questions or issues, they're sort of as the conduit back to the building. Dorian Panopoulos is on the team here, and I know he's been on the team, I've sat in on all the meetings from my desk. That's it.
So this is kind of reviewed and consented to be that. And I can answer the silly question, and again, you talk about piping and the system. Are any windows in this building open?
Yes.
Classroom buildings, I have a classroom.
Windows?
Correct. Yeah, I mean, it's planned, I mean, they have, they may not be showing it yet, but it's, I think that's something we'll discuss with the intent, is they had a couple of windows in the classrooms. The ones up in the south pipe, so they would be available. And potentially some of the office windows are locked.
Yeah, the reason I say that is if, you know, these kind of volatile temperatures we're dealing with, it's, you know, I own some buildings that, you know, they don't really go in the sixties, but, you know, you didn't have a window at all, it's a weird problem. So I want to make sure we have that, plus I think the activities that go in these buildings and, you know, we want that flow of, kind of, air.
Any other thoughts or comments? If none, we'll ask for a motion in a second to approve the proceeding of the design development phase for the building project or summer project. Some move. I was hoping to get to move on. I do have a couple more questions. So tonight we're voting on advancing to the design development stage, is that correct? That's what's on the table before us. I see the, there's a dollar amount associated with this, two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. My question is, is that being paid out to perform this task at this point in time?
That would be paid out, I mean, it'll be paid out on progress as we move forward with that full amount due after we complete that next phase. So that's the total of dollars to, at least right now, based on the current budget, those are the dollars that would be expended over the next four weeks.
Okay, so my question here is, and Mr. Matheson and I sit on the finance committee, and so we're taking this next step based on this quite, you know, seventeen million dollar number as, from a budget standpoint, right? Not the, you know, not the two hundred and fifteen thousand, but the plan shows seventeen million dollars.
But that includes all the cases.
Right, I understand, but we've not even come to any agreement on what we can afford, number one, and number two, how we would, we know, we have ideas on how we're going to fund it, but where the money's going to come from. So my question is, if you guys, the next data point for us, a decision point for us would be the eleventh of April.
We're just up there.
Yeah. And so if the board, maybe that night decides that we just can't afford this, we're not moving forward, that two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars is lost money, right? Some money at that point?
And you are going to have to pay a damn yes.
So, yes, I'm back to my old mantra, why are we moving to this next step if we're not convinced or we've not brought to the board seventeen million dollars is affordable, and how we're going to fund that, and yet we're going to spend two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars and potentially that's sunk money, and the decision to go forward on the eleventh of March may not be, or April rather, may not be, I mean, is no doubt. So that, that's my concern tonight. Yeah, that, that's certainly something the board members are going to have to weigh out. I think, Jim, in the vote, the bottom line is there's a design process that you have to follow to, to build this building. And the reality is, especially as it comes to the cost estimating, I guess what I would say is, based on the numbers that you are looking at right now for construction of this building, if you are not comfortable with a number that's somewhat near where it is now, then perhaps you're going to go no to move forward, because it's very likely that the end product that you're looking at, well, I don't think it will be exactly the number that you're looking at now, it's going to be substantively lower than that. So I guess if you have a sense that, or any board member has a sense, that you don't want to spend that kind of money on an early learning center, then I would assume that you probably wouldn't go to continue and spend money to design the building if you don't ultimately build, believe that you're going to have the ability to construct it. But, you know, we've obviously got to, we've got to move forward in the design process in order to be able to refine costs and, and, you know, bring them down. You are very likely, and when we get to the next conversation, there are going to be a couple of phases of approval. There are phases of approval for the design of the building itself, and then as we get into the discussion around the lease certificate or the lease agreement for the building, there's some approvals around entering into a lease agreement to construct this as, as well. So again, there's a couple of points of, of approval here, but, you know, the bottom line is that, you know, we are going to spend something in the range of where we are to construct this building.
Correctly from my, do we, I believe it was a public announcement on the board, we talked about, you know, what percentage of dollars you want to use from our current fund balance and some scenarios around the balance that we're coming from, to pick that kind of, it's not a big issue.
time as now we're using, so we grab parts, grab that certificate, now we move to the lease certificate. So we talked, it's more about generally this number with fund balance, operating light of payments to lease. Remembering that correctly?
I think there's some issues, I, I understand both issues are, from the finance committee, and I thought this, I felt that we, you know, I personally feel like we're moving forward on this to get to a goal of achieving it, but there are various stopping points along the way. One, they need a bids on these jobs, and they come in at twenty million dollars, well, I'm not going to proceed if that's the case. Uh, you know, and I, I, I think, you know, Jim's point is that, but I'm willing to say that I believe enough that we're going to move forward that we net, get to the design, we've got to go through the design fix. The, the two hundred and fifty dollars I'm going to, or two hundred and fifteen thousand, to me is, you know, it's part of the process, we have to, I, I weigh that against if we wait, let's say we wait another year, you know, we, the reason that this building is now fifteen, sixteen million for a lesser square footage than originally planned five years ago is because of inflation, okay? You know, so I don't want to get caught in that inflation, I'm a little concerned about that, the way the economy's rolling and everything else. So I think that I'm willing to support this to move forward and invest that, I'll call it, two hundred thousand, two hundred and fifty thousand, knowing that there's going to be stop points in the future that if the bids come in at twenty million or, or the design, you know, I, I want to see more on the classroom side of stuff and so on, and, you know, I think there's some questions that we had tonight, but I'm willing to support the moving forward process, mainly to avoid the increasing costs and knowing, and I, I don't think I've approved this program yet, but I, in my opinion, I think we've got a concept, financially, you know, I think we've talked about it, you know, but, you know, again, we, we're going to talk a little bit about it again tonight, we're going to talk about the budget planning coming up, uh, in a couple of weeks here. So I, I think all those things have to enter into the process, you know, that we can, you know, make sure they are affordable. You know, so I, I think they're in the framework of being, of, you know, that we can achieve this, you know, but I, I do, in my mind, still see stopping points, but I'm willing to say that I can support moving forward at this point on this item, knowing that that's part of the process. If we're not, we shouldn't even be talking about this, wasting this time, but, you know, so I, I feel that it's a progress, it's a step in the, the direction we're in.
I guess my only comment on that is, I agree, I, I support this initiative, right? I mean, that's, that I, on record about, but, uh, we have a finance committee meeting on the twenty-third, uh, we're going to have a five-year presentation on the, on the budgets, and I think these are the telltale meetings that are going to say, can we even afford seventeen million dollars? And so my concern is, again, I don't want the calendar to drive this process. I, I think it's irresponsible to pay two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, it's sunk money, if after the committee meeting on the twenty-third and the five-year forecast, and we all look at these numbers, and to Brad's point, there, you know, there's going to be some pain points, but even if we identify, you know, I, I just can't, I'm not comfortable spending two hundred thousand dollars when we're not at that point yet on seventeen million dollars. And again, we've got the twenty-third meeting, we'll have the presentations on the budgets, I think we defer this thing, or you may not want to defer, but again, I, I think it's important that we do, you know, be diligent before we spend another two hundred thousand dollars and make the, uh, sunk money on the eleventh of April. Go ahead, think of, I'm sorry, Jim, go ahead.
I have a couple of thoughts. One, my understanding of a construction by a set like this is that it's great to have a target number, but it's definitely, we can't fine tune the numbers without fine tuning the plan. And so we kind of have to keep moving forward in order to be able to get solid numbers. Secondly, um, I feel like we've made it abundantly clear through all of our conversations that we're all very, very concerned about the cost of this project and about being, um, careful on behalf of the community, and I feel like what I'm hearing is that they're hearing us, and that both our construction and our architect partners in this are trying to be responsive to our concerns. So I'm feeling confident that we've done good work in our relationship here and that they know, they understand our concerns and they're taking that into consideration, so that's why I feel like I'm confident moving forward.
In, in my view, in large respect, calendar is already driving this. We've got a fairly aggressive schedule here that we're facing, that, uh, if this building isn't open in August, late August of two thousand and nineteen. If we delay this process, we'll delay the opening of that building for another year, and the third increase replacement process results which would see two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Um, so in one, one respect, the calendar is like, that's the fact that you have to address that, and I think the most responsible, meaningful way to address that is to pursue one of these lines that we've drawn by, uh, for the last eight months. So, uh, any further comments? If not, we're going to have a, please, the Paulson's are approved, approved, to pursue the design development phase, we're going to retire the green ceremony until the second?
Absolutely.
Second, we find Mr. Matheson. Would you help us with this?
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mr. Matheson?
Yes.
Mrs. Crabtree?
Yes.
Mrs. Erickson?
Yes.
Mr. Gaviani?
No.
Mr. Hanlon?
Yes.
Mr. Crowell?
Yes, the motion to pursue the, the design development phase, the early childhood center, private, of course, and non-entry discussionary, um, discussionary number one, you know, the lease certificate, Paul, we've built a problem, Dr. Schuler.
Mr. Farley, and there's, uh, Mr. Lewis?
Thank you, Dr. Schuler. Uh, as, as previously mentioned, the finance committee has been reviewing the lease certificate auction, and we send Bob Lewis, the PMA, who presented to the board before, is here tonight to run through a, a quick presentation outlining some of the lease certificate process and the options. We need to convert, have me here present this. As I go through the presentation, if there's a question, then you have, you can feel free to interrupt me, and now I'll go through. If something interests a little later, I may refer your question until that slide. So the only school code allows a new building to be constructed for school purposes without going to referendum, as long as that building is constructed while it's, uh, being leased. And I've heard your discussions here tonight, the plan that is, concept plan that's in here anticipates a lease agreement in the amount not to see fifteen and a half million. Now, this, uh, lease agreement isn't necessarily the amount of debt that you're selling, it's the overarching document contained for the plan of finance. When you enter into a lease agreement, of course, you have to have a lessor that has the common party arrangement. When we've done these financings with other school districts, like Sunset Ridge, Cruster, Fairway Schools, the entity that's acted as the lessor is Zions Bank. They're very familiar with these constructs, they do a lot of these deals, not just here in Illinois, but a lot of Northwest, where they're primarily headquartered, so very comfortable with the arrangement. In addition, uh, district funds can be applied against the value of the lease. Leaks, in this concept plan, the assumption is four million dollars of those funds to be applied against the lease, leaving a balance of eleven and a half million dollars. That's the amount that we finance to the issuance of lease certificates. Lease certificates are sold in evidence of the overarching lease, so these are two different, uh, entities to the financing concept, either government lease document, and lease certificates are sold in evidence of that lease document. So Zions Bank is not providing the finance, they're just simply acting as a conduit in the financing, and if, the funds will come from the sale of the lease documents. It's contemplated that that sale would occur, uh, in a competitive sale, as we've done recently, where you take bids from underwriters, the same underwriters that did on the general obligation of funding bonds, and then those underwriters purchase those bonds, will then resell them to your investors. So it's ultimately those investors that buy the bonds from the underwriter that provide the eleven and a half million dollars, so it's not, again, it's not Zions Bank. As the discussion touched upon, the source of the payment for the lease certificates is not a separate levy like your general obligation bonds. All the bonds that you've issued for prior referenda, prior capital projects, like working cash bonds that provide the ten million dollars to the users, though, those are paid from a separate tax level. That money only can be used if you have bonds, can't be used to pay anything else. Lease certificates are paid from the same pot of money, if you will, that you pay for your operating expenses, teachers, O and M, and all those types of dollars that come from the operating funds. So there, there is no separate tax levy to pay, so it doesn't directly increase taxes. So when would the district then take ownership of the building? Ownership of the building can occur once the building is constructed and the, uh, lease certificates are paid off, then the underlying lease agreement is canceled. At that time, the district would take ownership of the building. At all times, the district still owns the land that the building is constructed. Uh, the lessor owns the building during the term of the lease, and the lease agreement, which you will have a, a sample of that next month, you, the lease agreement, um, or during the term of the lease agreement, you control the building, you're responsible for maintaining the building, it's as if you own the building for all, um, purposes. Um, the, so do I have any questions about, about the, the whole concept of lease and lease agreements?
I mean, it's going to be a question. So there's going to be somebody, a group, an investor or a group of investors, they would put eleven point five million dollars in pots somewhere.
Yeah.
Under the assumption that, or under the fact that we've entered into a lease to lease that building back.
Correct.
And this is, are we unique to do this in, in the state of Illinois?
No, I, um, last year plus maybe a couple of years we've done, we, our firm itself has moved up to your transactions.
So there, there, it's pretty clear in state law that a lease can be entered into before building is created?
That is correct. Yes, it's specifically in school code, I don't think I get the reference in here in my day, but it is in the school code. And those investors, just like what happens is, is you sell those bonds, opposing bond reviews later, the underwriter receives the funds from the investor, and then the, uh, those funds are then transferred at the closing through the underwriter to your account available for construction funds, and then those investors receive their interest in a book entry form in the lease certificate, so it's like, there's a geo. So this slide, I was a little more detailed about lease certificates, since they are a little different than bonds. As I've already mentioned, the annual payments payable from the operating funds, which, uh, I can't remember who mentioned it earlier, but I think it was, it was Paulson who mentioned that one time you were talking about debt certificates. It's very similar to debt certificates, the only real practical difference between a debt certificate and a lease certificate is the underlying document that the certificates are issued. Lease certificates issued against the lease, debt certificates are issued against a stolen contract. The reason to switch to lease certificates is because of the, the provision of security. Uh, a separate property tax levy is not available to pay the bonds, the maximum, excuse me, lease certificates, the maximum length of maturity is twenty years from the date of issuance, that's the same as general obligation bonds. Uh, the lease certificates will have an optional fault, commitment redemption prior to mature. I estimate that would be approximately eight years out. That's important for a couple reasons. One, you might be able to refinance into a lower interest rate, perhaps, but two, and maybe perhaps more importantly, that would allow you the opportunity to pay off those lease certificates early in the event that the operational funds have the ability to do so, and that would allow you to cancel the lease, uh, earlier than what had been anticipated, depending upon how many years the, the board chooses to allow you to proceed with construction. Now, a couple of slides here, you have some scenarios that look at different terms of ten, fifteen, twenty years. Lease certificates do come with a debt limit, uh, and in examining your debt limit, if you had, uh, presented that before, you have significant debt capacity, so this would not, uh, significantly impact your, your debt limit. The legal requirement to sell the lease certificates is a, a lease resolution and a separate resolution, resolution to authorizations of lease certificates. Uh, you're not required to hold a binding hearing, binding stands for binding, notification at hearing, so for instance, you do the working cash bonds, you're going to hold that hearing. And you're also not required of thirty-eight petition period. If you're working cash bonds, you're required of thirty-eight petition period, you should do a subpoena, pass this motion, a paper, and also the opportunity for petitions circulated. Debt certificate's not required, and lease certificate's not required by saving bonds on that one. It's only a, a certain funds that have the obligation to hold petition period. Well, what, what are the risks of the lease certificate financing? The first, uh, one, that's one that's been talked about tonight, is payments are paid from the operating funds. So if you look at your finances now, fitting a payment to the operations may seem to, or if you're doing a ten, fifteen year, or you're doing a twenty year structure, moves to say five, ten years from now, that payment's not going to pinch on the budget, pinch on the budget. So you need to be very, um, careful in planning this out, that you don't, uh, impact the future operations of the district. Now, the payments that we're looking at range from like the hundred thousand to, you know, a million plus, you look at that as a percentage of your overall budget, I think we've got big bill, isn't that, uh, less than one percent of your overall operating budget? Correct. So although a billion dollars is not a small number to us individually, as a percentage of your budget, it is, it is a smaller number. Uh, secondly, a change in law prevents the district from taking ownership of the building once construction is complete, lease taken off. So if you construct the building, you're leased, four or five years from now, something happens in the law that takes this provision out, since you can't take ownership of the building. Uh, typically when those things happen, arrangements already in place, grandfathered in, but, you know, there's never a guarantee that the law could change. If a private entity is utilized as a lessor, there's a chance that property will be subject to property taxes. Uh, that risk is mitigated because you can retain ownership of the land, so that land would be still held by the district's name, uh, paid for. The other financings that we've done, this has never occurred, but, you know, it's a risk that has to be disposed, that, uh, the assessment could determine that the building, because it's held in an age of some insane, wouldn't need to be taxed. Now, mitigating factor to that, of course, is if it is taxed, you are the largest taxing payer or tax recipient, so you'd be paying all those taxes right back to yourself, and you'd always work out an arrangement with other taxing bodies to get their portion when you paid for them. And then lastly, what if a lessor enters into bankruptcy? So anybody that you want to, or enters a lease arrangement with, you want to make sure it's a strong financial institution, if that goes into bankruptcy, what happens to your underlying lease arrangement? And, you know, protections go into the arrangement, but, you know, bankruptcy can sometimes be unpredictable.
Uh, the, uh, we're going to, you know, if we continue on this schedule, we, we're going to start construction between now and sometime before, uh, August of nineteen, okay? Do we borrow, is this money available, I, I can't understand, do we start paying for this lease immediately, or do we start in August of nineteen, uh, you know, from a budget point?
Yeah, and the next slide is, that, that was, let's skip that now and go to the timeline, so I can address your question, and then we'll come back to this guidance. So, uh, the concept plan has the board approving a lease agreement on February fourteenth, and not, not to exceed whatever it is currently. You don't pay any interest from that one, because interest is approved on the lease certificates once they're sold. So you set this, uh, fifteen and a half million dollar lease agreement sort of governs the whole process. No payments are exchanged, and it sets a not to exceed amount, doesn't obligate the final amount, project amount of fifteen and a half million, just can't exceed that, without mentioning that, that basically. And then you go, if you see on the slide A, you go through a series of steps, uh, that you discussed about the project itself. We want to actually begin drafting documentation until July, August. You would issue, you should open your, current plans, open the bid documents in July ninth, or excuse me, issue the bid documents in July ninth, open them on the second, and then you have the information about those bids. Then you would know, you know, like, you had an intention, if it comes in twenty million, you're not going to approve. At that point, the whole process stops, you haven't incurred any other financing costs on this, other than the some miscellaneous attorney fees from Zions Bank through the future of the lease agreement, which means it doesn't tie down to that. Uh, you weren't incurred any other costs up to that level. If you decide to proceed after you opened the bids, the plan is to bring a parameters resolution from August fifteen to to approve, say, all the lease certificates, and you'd also afford construction permits. Around that time, you'd either be the main of the lease certificates, sell those lease certificates on August twenty-second, close on the twelfth. So that's when you get the proceeds, that's when interest would start to prove.
And payments would, you can show.
Yeah, payments would begin, we had some discussions with Jeff and all that, probably not to the next fiscal year. So you remain, you had that remainder on the fiscal year before you happened to make a payment. This is made probably, I forget what structure you look at, but it wouldn't be until fiscal year twenty-one.
So it'd be after, basically, if you finished in August nineteen, it would be in August of nineteen, payments?
Yeah, but you don't necessarily have to make it one year later, you can choose another date, July first.
Substantially, it would be about the time of construction's approval.
Right. But one of the things that we talked about, if we look back at the payment slide now, is in the financial forecast, the budget for fiscal year, school year nineteen, Mr. Farley's already factored in a payment estimate for these lease certificates. Well, likely you wouldn't have a payment, if you had a payment, it might be only interest only, paying the schedule comp, which means if you budgeted, for instance, a million dollars, and you either had no payment, or maybe you only had an interest payment, and let's say the interest payment's four hundred thousand for fiscal year nineteen. That leaves six hundred thousand dollars left over on the budget, which instead of having a six hundred thousand dollar principal payment, you would instead contribute that six hundred thousand dollars you budgeted to the project and borrow six hundred thousand dollars less. So borrowing eleven and a half million dollars in this concept plan, you might only borrow ten point nine, and then transfer that extra six hundred thousand. But all that sort of depends on the timing and the final payment structure that you choose. On slide seven, we provide three different scenarios for the potential of the payment. And in all these scenarios, you're balancing two items. The annual payment that you believe you can afford in the operating budget comfortably, and the amount of interest that would need paid back. If you want to lower the annual payment, you have to push out the term, you ultimately pay back more interest. And you can see that in the schedules. In the ten-year maturity, your annual payment's estimated at a million three fifty. And the total interest expense on that is estimated at about two million dollars. You see at the bottom of the chart. And fifteen-year scenario, the annual payment drops to under a million dollars, but the amount of interest repaid is three point three. You're delaying, referring, you're paying on principles, you're making interest longer, plus you're gonna have a higher average interest rate. You see the average interest rate increases by forty basis points or so. And in the final structure, or scenario, you have a twenty-year payback, so the payment goes down to three hundred and eighteen thousand, eight hundred and twenty thousand roughly, but the amount of interest increases to four point eight million, and the rate's at three point six percent. Now, we've estimated this based off rates of December fifteen plus an additional quarter percent. These, of course, are always subject to fluctuation between now and when you just sell them in this plan in August. So, but then the payment should be closed. So if you, for instance, chose a fifteen-year maturity, it should vary a whole lot, about a million dollars. Maybe in a bit of nine hundred and seventy-five thousand, or in a bit of a million fifteen thousand, depending on what kind of interest rates. Any questions on the scenarios?
I think if these finance committee, we were kind of looking at the fifteen-year model. As soon as we look at this, you know, that was kind of the one we were looking at that made the most sense, or, you know, it was too demanding and so on. Not that we committed, but that was kind of a suggestion.
So, when we're ready, the finance committee can come to the board with a recommendation on which scenario they would do it.
I think the administration, I think the recommendation based on the conversation in finance committee.
Well, just a little process question. You mentioned that we weren't sure yet when the first payment, I don't know if this is going to be paid down in due, whether it be starting in fiscal two thousand nineteen, the fiscal year of two thousand nineteen, or right, the beginning of fiscal two thousand. And you mentioned that they create an interest on it, and devote the principal to the construction cost of the building. Are these lease certificates issued out during the series, depending on how much we're financing, it's called, do we want to do a borrow?
The way this is set forth is you issue them all at one time, because you have pretty good information of what you would need, because you, if it just opened bids. So that's what they contemplated. And there could be reasons why you may want to separate them into a couple of different tranches. One is to take advantage of paying qualifications certain years. It could be that you don't want to borrow more than you need to, you know, if there's leftover proceeds, what do you spend that on? It could be perhaps some of the demolition expenses, which you currently not paying, so these are the things out. But, you know, multiple issuances, you gotta balance out against rising, potential rise in interest rates. Also, the cost of issuance, the multiple issuances, you try to avoid. The advantage of doing multiple issuances is defining, because the yield curve is flat now. So even if you borrow money before you need it, you get to invest that. Couple of years ago, we did the working cash bonds, your investment rate wouldn't be all that great, because investment rates were that high. Today, you know, you're, the district's investing above one percent, or like order maybe, depending on determine the investment. So that, that interest earning would offset the, any cost theory you have of borrowing. In fact, it can factor in some of those interest rates, because when you do size a borrow, it's sort of a destiny. There'll be a couple hundred thousand dollars, so then you don't need to borrow that couple hundred thousand dollars. So those are some, that's something fine to me. And regarding the payment, I need to correct something I said a little bit earlier. Though this concept plan is set up assuming a June first, December first payment cycle, remembering the day nature semi-analytic, the principal payment. If you followed that cycle, and then the reason for that, if you make the principal due June first, that leaves you the entire fiscal year to get the revenue stream, make that payment, because you're not letting for it. So in this concept plan, you would have a payment fiscal year nineteen, but it would just be interest. And the reason for that, as we were discussing, it doesn't make sense to issue financing in August of eighteen that has a principal payment in June of nineteen, in the same fiscal year. So why are you borrowing money that's going to pay back from the same pot of money a few months later? So that's why we said we shave off the principal component and just take that right directly to the project.
Also, if I recall correctly. You know, again, we're using fund balance money, so if, you know, let's say we're looking here at fifteen million building cost. We could borrow up to that, or not borrow, but proceeds from lease, whatever you want to call it. We still got two plus or a million plus more out of operating money that we need fund for the equipment and the other costs that were on that sheet. So, you know, literally, if, let's say, for whatever reason, it came in at, you know, eleven million instead of eleven five, or, you know, fifteen million versus fifteen five, or something like that, you know, that we would have to use less, you know, operating money. It's called reserve money.
Yeah, that's a good point. Since it's described the way I described it, you would issue all, use all the lease certificates. And if you dedicate four million and you end up, you know, a half a million dollars left over, you have more flexibility with that half a million dollars that's operating dollars. So say, okay, there's a half million dollars that we didn't spend, we can now redirect that to some of our other capital that you are planning for. Whereas if you spent all the operating money, let's say you spent lease certificate money, that money's pre-restricted.
Bob, is, there's no prepayment penalty, correct? If we had the, you're fortunate enough to have the money and we could, you know, pay it early before maturity, or are there any prepayment penalties?
Well, you would have to, your bond, your investors in that, so they're going to want some call protection, where they know that they'll have it for a period of time. Typically, we put an eight-year call, eight to nine-year call in these things, so once you get that a call, it's only a penalty, you just have to pay the principal's owed. But if you try to do something before that, it can do pay them off outside of the fees associated. That could, you have some costs associated with it. Now, we can, as we get closer, look at shorter call, but that just comes out of call, so.
And also, on that timeline, time events, why are we beginning the movement of funds in March, from O and M to capital?
I think it's to cover some of those preliminary expenses that we just talked about, because it's the opinion of council that any expenditures on this project, that occur after the lease agreement is in place to be applied to the school.
Right, is what we need, what, this is, now, we're just getting information, right?
Correct, yeah. So that, again, the timeline on page eight of Bob's presentation really specifies kind of the key dates that line up on this, so there's no action on this tonight. We just wanted to make sure that the board had a full background around the lease certificate for action around this, which will be at the February meeting. And at the February meeting, I just want to clarify, you know, one piece on this. So as you approve the lease agreement that, you know, specifies the lease structure, you are not locking yourself into a cost. There will be a dollar amount in that lease agreement, but stated as a not to exceed. Right, so you are in essence setting a cap based on where you currently are, but it does not mean you have to spend that amount of money in the construction of the building. So if it turns out that the construction of the building is less than fifteen and a half, it can be adjusted down as you get to the lease financing.
I want to comment, we've looked at this, I don't know when we started looking at this, it seems like five years ago, but I, I think it's changed, obviously, because we've gone to the lease certificate. But this is pretty consistent with everything we've talked about, that has led us up to the decision, potentially move forward on this project. For example, I forget what date, I think I guess on the lease, September maybe?
Yes.
So you know, other questions or comments, so thank you very much.
You're welcome.
The next discussion I'm going to address is the two thousand and nineteen new construction, Dr. Fu.
Thank you, next problem. So just a little bit of background on this discussion. So when the board considered and ultimately approved your fees for the current school year, which you did back in the spring of last year, one of the items of significant discussion was the whole area of the fees that are charged for student activities, primarily athletics. And so the board at the time, you approved the fees with a modest increase in the overall registration fee, but directed the administration to gather a little bit of information to bring back to you in advance of the fee discussion this year. So again, I want to clarify, I'm making any decisions on this tonight. This is just the initial report out, and based on that discussion from last year, where the board was interested in seeing the relationship between costs to operate programs and revenue collected via the fees. So I'm gonna hand it over to Mr. Farley and just let him kind of walk you through the pieces of information you have, and then we'll answer any questions that you have, and identify any other information that you will need in advance of a discussion potentially in the future on the fees themselves.
I'm not sure. The finance committee has been in the process of reviewing the fee schedules based on the discussion last spring. We examined at the time, as Dr. Fu mentioned, the direct fees that all students pays, supplemental fees and costs for goods and services, and then the costs associated with athletics and athletics is where the media has been focusing. There's a document attached for your review that reveals the middle school as well as high school sports, as far as what the amount of collection is for user fees, based on overall numbers of participants. There is a percentage collected. We do have some fees that are waived, and we do have some non-collected. And you can see at the middle school level, about eighty, we have about eighty-six percent collection ratio for that, for that group, which collects about one hundred and twenty-three thousand fees, and we have about four hundred and thirty thousand dollars in expenditures. The committee did ask what would increase in user fees look like if we were at twenty-five, fifty, or seventy-five? And eighty-six percent, you could see the dollar amounts off to rank there for middle school. And then the committee really focused, sort of focused, as we talked about both middle school and high school, is at what funding level should the district be funding sports as a percentage of the overall cost to operate the program? And you see, at the middle school level, we're at about twenty-nine percent funding level, and you can see what the overall added revenue, the thirty, thirty-four, forty, or forty-six, based on those progressive different increases at the middle school level. When you circle back down to the high school, you can see we collect about seventy-seven percent ratio there, and we did the same thing with the, add the fees of twenty-five, fifty, and seventy-five, how much that would collect. You can see the overall total revenue, and again, we don't have, at the middle school, we also have gave another revenue sources to offset the fees, which the revenue might come from the, from the positive to participating in the program. But you'll see at the, at the high school level, we are in total of three hundred and two thousand, and a few receipts collected, with a total of almost four hundred thousand, and we had all the other revenue associated with those programs, that kind of brings in. Right now, we're at a fee as a percentage of the funding level is at twenties percent, and we're transferring the total revenue as a percentage of twenty-six percent. And then going along the bottom, you see what is funding levels, additional revenues are bringing for, and what percentage would be. So I think the, you know, the overall discussion of the finance committee, if you're, if you're necessary, if you have anyone to go in, we really started to focus on what, what fee or what percentage level should the district choose to fund for sports that's relevant. What is our current user fee for the two levels? High school's one fifty?
High school's one fifty, and this one's one twenty-five.
I have a couple of questions. I'm going to use girls' basketball as an example. And I look at, we can work, and that cost for participation is a little over a thousand dollars. And a women's itself is seven hundred and eighty-six, with the exact same number of students. So I'm not quite sure why there's that variation, that's question number one. Question number two is, some of our sports have additional fundraising for families to participate in, or extra fees, I'm going to use girls' golf, for example, because that was one that my children would participate in. We've got, in addition to the hundred and fifty thousand fee, I believe there was maybe another hundred and thirty-five dollars per child that we went above and beyond that. Where does that get calculated then? Is that above and beyond them, than that cost of the participant? So if it's nine hundred and twenty-two dollars per child, is that another hundred and thirty-five added on there realistically that that score is costing? I'm just curious where that costs.
Yeah, the revenue here is just accounting for the fee that students are paying to participate in the activity. If they're, if they are paying an additional cost directly associated with that, that activity, or I think fundraising cost that's not accounted for in this, nor is the expenditure that that's supporting. So we, a number of our activity, or most of our sports activities, we have activity funds. We don't through our budget fund currently any cloth, any uniforms, the programs fundraise for the purpose of raising monies for, for those activities. If they're taking an additional trip out of town, they're going to a tournament that requires some additional travel, it's the activity fund monies that are, that are covering that. So it's I guess, it comes on a revenue side, there are probably some additional revenues that are collected through fundraising, but there are also some additional expenditures that those are offsetting, that's in and out.
So one thing that I guess I would want to know is, you know, if we were looking at, at raising fees, what are, some of these sports, some of these sports have significant out-of-pocket fees for parents already, and I think we need to have that big picture in mind. So if parents are already, have maybe a fundraising goal that they have to fundraise, maybe another two hundred and fifty dollars per child. maybe another two hundred and fifty dollars per child, and then we were floating the fee on top of there, I don't know if that's... I guess I would want to know that information before we're making decisions. And then my question about why is there that discrepancy for the same sport, same number of students?
Part of it could be a tournament, Wheaton North's a tournament for the girls, so that could be extra costs. I think we're in referees, if I remember correctly. And it's difficult, because this is a snapshot in time. You know, we've had, done this track before, and you see variances for football. Because if Wheaton North has five home games, and Wheaton North itself has four, the revenues would be off. So that's an issue for all authors. So there are factors that are involved in that cost per student. It's really just a snapshot in time. There's other factors that can come into play that can vary the numbers between the two high schools. But I can check that out at the girl's basketball. But I believe that maybe that...
On the expense side, who owns the decision for the expense on the investment level for each sport, you know, that's a total? And then what's the process for setting that?
So any of the expenses that are on here, we ultimately control. The board, you control it through your budget. Again, as you look at the percentages that are on here, the largest percentage of your expenditure to operate these activities are your staff costs. Those costs are in control by a portion of the planning agreement that stipulates what folks get paid based on time and allocation per sport or activity. So that's the largest chunk of this, but again, ultimately, you control the expenditure through your budget allocation, although obviously some factors that impact what that is. The second part of Chris's question. So if an individual sport is choosing, a coach is choosing, to take students or kids to another tournament or event out of town, which the fundraising for, it's the individual coach that's working with the athletic director for approval to do that. Also, on the fundraising side, we don't set a cap at how much money that a particular program can fundraise, but if they're doing a fundraising activity, that does get approved by the athletic directors.
I have a couple of questions on that. Number one, on the one page, it talks, you know, shows the middle school and talk about the percent collected, seventy, eighty-six percent, and then seventy-seven percent at the high school. What does that mean? Why is it only, what's that percentage? Percent what?
That's the total percentage. All students are fully paid. But we do have students that are free and reduced, and we do have some that we have to chase to get, and depay them. So the collection percentage is really a factor for those two things.
Okay, so students that are under free and reduced may not have to pay the fee, so percentage, right? I mean, that's a good, probably the biggest number. That's number one. Number two, I want to point out here that the cost is not on it. In the cost, we made the agreement this year that the parents are going to pick up a hundred percent of the cost of that program. And I guess the biggest question, we discussed this at the finance committee as well, why are we doing this? Why are we increasing fees? You know, and I think, you know, I think I heard something earlier tonight about feeling the pain. You know, we have to fund eighty, ninety million dollars of repair costs on buildings that we did not get any closing from a referendum. So as we now enter this budget program, we have to look at, again, the revenue source or the expenditure source to try and get more money to set aside to basically pay for the repair costs, deferred maintenance, whatever you want to call it, that we inherited as board members. So, you know, I think this is really the first step, you know, in, you know, is this a big number? I mean, let's just look at that briefly. If we increase the user fee on middle school sports, seventy-five dollars, same on high school, that amounts to about two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. It surely is not going to fund seven million dollars in total. But it is one step that we talked about earlier, that with the, you know, we've got to look at every piece of this. And this is the first one that's hung up. So I think the reason we're looking at this is that, really, we talked about it a year ago, about addressing this issue. And now we're here today, and this analysis is helping us. But I have a problem a little bit with the cost, for instance. You know, why should the parents have to pick that up? You know, and what is the right number? So I think the board has to come to a conclusion, are we going to increase fees? And if we are, do we want to have a cross-the-board percentage? Do we want to look at program by program? And these are the things that we've kind of left the finance committee off the table, because I don't think as a finance committee, it's a board-level decision of paying the fee increases and what is the standard going to be that we're going to pay? Is it going to be a percentage of total cost, or what, that each participant is going to have to pay? Because I think, you know, the other side of this is if we continue the programs, we have deductions in numbers, you know, and because of fee increase, we're probably not going to gain anything, we wouldn't gain these numbers that are written there anyway. So, but again, I think, you know, this is part of that symptom of dealing with the big picture of how we fund the maintenance, that we have no other, that we got no other source of it from the referendum. So, you know, that's kind of why this is, you know, the first step in that process.
And then if you've got a component of that, though, is looking at the one point five million, and saying, I'm going to invest in us in activities. It's a decision actually that I control. I'm not saying it's popular, I'm not saying it's happy, I'm not saying it's easy. And I think the other side of the formula that we have to consider. So if we're going to consider increasing fees, let's talk about the expense on the equation as well. Equal is hard.
And do we have to do it by, we're doing a flat fee across the board? Can we be looking at things like, you know, Billy mentioned Wheaton North called a tournament? Well, if that's almost three hundred dollars a member student, that's, you know, should we be looking at the program itself? Are there things within the program itself that, you know, are luxuries? That maybe aren't part of just IHSA participation, tournaments, and all of these other things? Is there a way to scale it down while still being able to offer the activity, but maybe do so in a more fiscally responsible way without really, you know, the extras? You know, we're doing tournaments and things like that. Is there a way to be looking at that? Or can we say, we're going to fund X amount, you know, this is our base number, and if per activity, and that activity is significantly more, then maybe that cost gets passed on, versus say, every sport should get, or some kind of tiered program, or, you know, based on costs? Are there different ways we could look at this, rather than just a flat fee across the board?
Well, to follow up on that, because I'm going, Dr. Schuler, you have the athletic stats of either high school or middle school, seems to break out the board. Are they aware of the cost per participant, or are they...
I'm surprised.
Has this been the first year they've done this?
Sure.
Have we solicited any feedback from them about how to address this issue? What is a fair way to do it? Have we gotten any quick confirmation?
We have, and what I will tell you from the building, Rob, is that I think there is great concern about a tiered approach around fees. And I think part of that has to do, I did the underlying assumption around, there's certain activities that cost more to operate, and perhaps we should charge more. I think you do have to be very mindful in a public school, too, about barriers that you put in place that may not allow certain students to access certain activities. Meaning, you know, if you run into a tiered approach where it is significantly more expensive, a hundred percent more expensive to participate in one activity or over another, are you creating barriers, understanding the student population that you're serving? Are you creating barriers that are not allowing certain students to access certain activities? So, and, you know, there's a push-pull. Obviously, just, you know, if the guiding principle is kind of a economic one, I mean, I get why that question would come up, but I think that is a legitimate question or concern around, you know, if basketball is three hundred dollars and track is a hundred dollars, have you started to create a barrier where you've got some students that can't access your basketball program? Because you priced it at a level that they can't perform. So I think there's a consideration, certainly, I know that's a consideration that the high school team feels very strongly about, I think, as you're looking at it. I guess what I would tell you is, we get into the discussion. I think there are a number of different ways that we can look at it. But I do think ultimately, when we get into the fee discussions, it does come down to a budget conversation. So if you absolutely believe there's a budget gap that you want us to address through an increase in fees, identify that and let us develop a plan and bring a recommendation to you, rather than try to dive your way into how you solve that problem.
To Chris's question, I'm not positive on this, but I think home first. School district has a tiered basis, and they're trying to get out of it. I was talking to the business manager, he wasn't fully sure that was the case, but he didn't check it. It's maybe an example, on this, trying to work away from it.
And Rob and I attended a conference, I think it was alternative funding, maybe it was that in the school that presented, went away from all of these fees for actual curricular or pre-curricular activities, and increased their overall fee with the idea that pre-curriculars benefit all students within the building, therefore, fees should be there, versus that. And I would just be curious, other school districts are doing that? They said that was a revenue increase for them, and that they could justify it because you might not be able to, on a football team, be going to the football game, and you kind of protect. So that's just, I guess, another way to, that's the first time I heard of it, another way to look at it.
You know, just looking at this high school comparison, shoot, just two quick observations. One, I was shocked at the wide fluctuations in the price for it. What was even more interesting is, if you look at the fall sports and the spring sports, they're about the same, they're about twenty dollars. But if you look at the winter sports, they're a little magnitude higher of the cost per participant. I don't know if that's just, if we have to be inside the hot space, or what the deal is, but it's pretty obvious that it was huge. And maybe that's just, you know, girls' basketball, I don't know. Girls' students don't want to sit inside on all those expenditures, or something like that, with the winter cost.
Let's get the, just always, is there, the arts, kind of active compared to the arts wing, and things like that? Is there a reason that it's not being done?
Yeah. One, just was not part of the initial question that we were answering for the finance committee. Again, we continue to get that, you don't charge a lot of fees associated with programs in the art or your clubs. Again, we do have some expenditure that the board is covering, but I think, feel correct me if I'm wrong on this, but I think the very question that you asked around sports, a number of years ago, the district leader moved to adjust the registration fee and then stopped collecting activity fees. So you participate in a club, you know, we stopped charging twenty dollars to be in the club, right? That's embedded in your registration fee experience.
But we're still writing checks. Parents are, the parents are writing the check. It's not, they're not collecting it maybe at the district level, but the parent is still writing the check to be in the club. It was like a club, you write a check, you participate.
Please help me, Chris.
The parent writes it in the mailbox, and the club that it's for. So it must be going to some kind of activity.
It would be an activity, and how it's, it's like, when I'm charging the general at club participation fee.
I guess when I got back to that before, I would like to understand what parents are paying outside of these fees for these activities, before we were to say, I want to increase the fee. I think I'd want to make a picture of what are they already paying in order to be able to do this, too. And is there somebody that's monitoring that, so that it's not getting to be outrageous for parents? So I'm wondering, is it...
Do you pay for, provide uniforms for some sports? Not paying.
School district does not pay for uniforms.
Yeah, either not, or like, rec or cross-country, there aren't uniforms, or is it...
They have uniforms, but the school district, our budget does not make a lot of code fundraises to be able to provide or purchase uniforms.
I'm just trying to remember my own experience. I did sometimes see, bought brand-new stuff every year, everybody bought their own stuff. But I thought that sports like track and cross-country, they were issuing stuff that exists somewhere. They didn't actually buy it in the uniform, do you have it wrong about that?
Don't the boys sometimes provide uniforms? In this, that's something more verified, I just think they sometimes provide, I know they provide golf bags, or they provide different things along the way.
I think the board reported approved the night, so donation to buy cigarettes for the wrestling team. So, you know, there probably are some that are purchased, but the uniform, it updated a lot more by fundraising than they would be if it was for a person.
Right, so my question is, are there some sports where you buy it, and you use it forever, and you keep it? Versus other sports where you are issued whatever it is supposed to wear every day, season, and you kind of...
You could be correct, so there are some sports where the coach may be maintaining the supply of the uniforms, but again, whether that's purchased on an annual basis, and the kid is keeping it, or the program is buying them and reusing them year over year. In either way, that is outside, any of those costs, both revenue expenditure are outside of this analysis.
But Chris is asking a question, too, that I wonder as well, of what's the true cost to participate in this sport? Because you're going to use a tennis sport because I know it. Even paying for my own child, I think, wow, there are a lot of kids who can play this sport because there's a user sport fee, and then there's a whole lot more involved when you've got to buy all the clothes that go on with it.
I guess my sense is, I would like to do something, but it's going to be such a small effect to us, as board, in terms of our overall budget challenges. So I'm not sure how we weigh that. Certainly, seventy-five dollars per student is a pretty significant decrease, or a pretty nominal impact on our budget. Some of the reasons is not good for that, so I'm kind of part of this, though.
Isn't that kind of what we did last year, if I recall? We made some modest increase, and that was kind of the throw of the same thing. So I think we have to do something, maybe kind of put a policy in place, you know, to say what we're going to do. Because otherwise, it's actually every year, it's not...
I think that's the point I was making before, is that sometimes we can make a lot of really modest increases, meaning they add to something that's enough to have an impact in some little way on our budget, but not undercut the integrity of the school district that's having an impact in the process.
Well, I need to, Mrs. Mathis' point in mind, and I'll concur, as the finance committee, we sit here and say, what's the goal, right? What are we trying to accomplish, to try and raise more revenue? Or we're going to look at the expense side of the equation, and I think Dr. Schuler said it correctly. Is there a gap you're looking to fill in the budget, and we're not there yet until we really look at the five-year plan? You know, the math is pretty simple. You know, our expenditures are one point nine million dollars for middle school and high school. And of that one point nine, one point five million are salaries, eighty percent, well, seventy percent. So the question becomes, we raise the fees twenty-five dollars, and we take action on expenses to keep the programs running and not burden the parents? Or what's the goal, right? I mean, we can't get there from the revenue standpoint, or maybe a combination thereof, but it's a pretty substantial number when you're with the one point nine expenditures and one point five that is salaries.
Well, I'm not sure where that, I'm just trying to use it.
Yeah, again, I don't think it was a go-around conclusion, and I heard a couple of other pieces of information that board members are interested in, just understanding if there are other fees that parents are paying, we will certainly try to collect that information to broaden this out. I heard Mr. Hamlin asked a question that's around any other fees for other activities, especially in the arts, that may not be incorporated in this. We will certainly try to gather a couple of other pieces of information. I think you've got a couple of meetings coming up, you know, where you're going to begin to look at finance projections. And that may ultimately bring clearer what, what a charge is around this. Again, I don't, you know, I guess the only thing I would say to you kind of leaving in closing tonight is that I certainly don't believe that you raise fees simply as an exercise to raise fees. You do it because there is either a budget gap that you are trying to address or to Mr. Matheson's point, you're attempting in the long term to kind of arrive at kind of a policy statement around, you know, here's, here's the ratio of the expenditure for these programs that we believe we should be covering through, you know, revenue and fees. I think there are ten, two avenues around that. But let us get you all the information first, let a few of the other, you know, budget leases play out, and then we will certainly circle back to this conversation.
I would still like to know, you know, with some of these sports, are we doing all of these tournaments and things like that where we've driven up the cost? Whereas maybe if we weren't doing those, maybe the expensive salaries, if they're not doing as many activities, maybe that gets reduced. That's where you're reducing your, some of your expenses. You know, so I mean, if we have sports that every weekend are doing tournaments in addition to their IHSA schedule, are we being forward productive here and just overdoing when they could still be getting, you know, their, their experience? You know, could we be coming back to maybe then some of the costs that are recurring with that? Whether it be salary, referees, all those other things that add up to that 1.1 million?
If I may, all, all IHSA sports have competition limits. So you can only play X number of football games, X number of golf contests, X number of wrestling matches. So if they're doing a tournament, instead of traveling, for example, five times, I may go to a weekend tournament, play five teams at one time, but under no conditions can any IHSA sport play more than the scheduled contest. And so there is no, you know, like in, in baseball, if you play 30 contests or 40 if you wanted to, that's kind of not, so there's no, there's no fluffing, if you will, with the competition. It's always in that limit. And in many sports, they, you know, let's travel, wrestling is a good example. Instead of having five individual meets of a tournament, play a round of the tournament with five schools. You only travel once, you wrestle once, five contests, that kind of eats up that time. So I didn't want to interfere, but I also didn't want us to have to gather that information when truly not an option for X. And the fine arts, saying the marching band, which is kind of quasi-actual, all of the fine arts, band, orchestra, music are all curricular. So there's no, none of those are co-curricular activities. All of the players, of course, that they credit are part of the class, or the band performs, that's part of their class, and so those are not co-curricular activities. So we, we don't charge the fee for math class, we don't charge the fee for orchestra or band either.
I was thinking of the flights and marching bands.
Right.
Any other comments in the boardroom? If not, next time, again, there's a reference to the RIB report that we've all received, monthly, monthly financial reports and employee reports. We've also received board clear reports of both the finance committee and the student engagement committee. Are there any other reports in the boardroom?
Just wanted to comment on, thank you everyone for that attended the Triple I meeting that they put their reports in, and I found that very informational and very rewarding that we attended, so I would hope that we continue to do that in the future. It's really a good way for us to be trained, these board members, because we're coming with blank faces, I think, and now that we've been trained, we've started looking a little better a bit after that.
Well, thank you, Sean.
I was trying to chat in on that too. We are implementing some of the things that we learned at that conference. You know, I was attending the community meeting, the agent meeting, and the conference that Brad and I attended. Several things are coming out of that that our district is now looking to use for community meetings. We are using, we'll do some reminder.
For future discussions, include our five-year financial projections, you know, master technology plan, and future instruction in technology and the TIC plan. We'll have a check with the board this Saturday, January 20th, from 9:00 AM to 10:30 AM at the Scope Service Center. And our next, our meeting, the committee, the whole meeting on January 31st, at 7:00 AM at the Scope Service Center. And our next upcoming meeting, it's on February 14th, it's on 18th, it's on Sunday, 7:00 AM, at Wiggert Elementary School.
I don't want that back, you know? We do have one public comment tonight from Mr. Doug Gilmore. And we still have, what do you hear at the beginning of the meeting where I read instructions for public comment?
You can hold the clock for a second, just deep, cleansing breath. On a lot of nights, I just want to say thank you. I've never really paid attention to the all the hard work that really goes on in these meetings. So thank you for your time, you guys are doing very well. All right, ready, go, okay. My name's Doug Gilmore, I am a resident, I have two students in the school district. If you recall from two months ago, I was here to bring to you the topic of errors that I believe that are in our science textbooks, specifically biology textbooks around the topic of biological origins. I'm going to continue dialoguing with you and bringing new information to you. Obviously, I could not get my entire argument in three minutes last time I was here. So tonight, I felt the need to kind of level set, maybe set the foundation for future topics that I bring to you, and that is to discuss with you kind of how we learn and come to a knowledge of the truth. Ostensibly, science is a seeking after the truth of how the world works, how reality really functions in the natural world. And so we need to kind of use our reasoning skills in order to come to these conclusions. So have some diagram here. Maybe this is review for some of you, maybe this is some new information about, um, deductive reasoning is one form of reasoning where we get to the conclusion through a set of prefaces whereby the premises are true and the argument is adhered to the rules of logic, then the conclusion is guaranteed. Premises are true, logic is sound, guaranteed conclusion. Now, we know in science, not a whole lot of things are guaranteed to be true. So science usually doesn't use these, this form of reasoning very much. The next form is inductive reasoning, which is used quite frequently in the evidential sciences, like chemistry and physics. And it's a movement from small evidential, specifically known things to a more general principle. So we can do lots of little experiments, we can learn about things in contained spaces, and from that, we kind of draw a general principle of how things work. Day gravity, right? Things fall on us every day. We come to the conclusion that gravity is a real thing and it operates in a certain way. This doesn't work for historical scientists, right? Paleontologists are going to dig up a bone, they can't re-go back in time and see that bone and when it died. So we have a different form of reasoning for historical scientists. And then, oh, one point about inductive reasoning is we're not dealing with truth, we're dealing with probabilities, where we come to a greater and greater confidence that all of these small things are supported by this general principle. Abductive reasoning then... Abductive reasoning says we are going to infer to the best explanation, right? And then, this one is this?
Read that, but go.
Okay, so, so abductive reasoning then, we have something that we see now, pointing in time, and we can collect various pieces of evidence around that item that we want to know what caused it. And we have to go back in time, which we can't do. So what we have is we come up with causes, lots of different causes that could have some impact on the different pieces of evidence that we have collected. And we come to the conclusion that one of these causes is the best explanation. And generally speaking, the best explanation is one that is causally adequate, which means we know from our present day understanding of cause and effect that this cause will cause this effect. But the best then is the one cause where there's a piece of evidence that there is only one cause for. So I will just set at that, and I look forward to seeing you again in the future. And hopefully, Saturday, we can dialogue on this. I'm kidding. Thank you, Mr. Gilmore.
Can I make a public comment based on what's happening in the meeting? First thing I'd like to say is thank you for your presentation. I wish we would have given more time, especially when they sit here for this entire meeting. Second thing, if suddenly that bridge jumps off the cliff, does that mean we should jump off the cliff? The truth of management from many things, or one's body or one other body, that does something that's illegal, and somebody else follows suit, and somebody else follows suit, it doesn't make it legal. This district actually went to court in the Dr. Panalani's contract. We put that one past due. Because it's been done, doesn't make it legal. You actually have to go back to the law and say, if what we're doing, we keep it with the law. The next point is, you have a lack of trust in the community. You do this, you're not holding that trust level at all. You're really not going to a referendum. I appreciate the idea that we want to do it out of current revenue. I also appreciate the idea, because this is, we talk about sports, they can't do it out of current revenue. Or this is put it this way, it's very, 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 very tight. And you're all looking for more revenue rather than looking to control cost. You need to be controlling cost, starting with salaries and benefits. You had more than enough money in 2001, Dr. Panalani made, you're like, 2008, you're having about a decade at least of raises and benefits in excess of inflation. You ran out of money, by 2010, you were letting off people. You need a little history lesson, come see me when you're ready.
We're a big fan of our meeting, and a motion to adjourn. Lieutenant Mattson, second, second vice president, all votes in favor of adjournment, could signify by standing up. No votes, we are clear on adjournment.